Joe Leggins?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to NJ SA ten colon four, the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Board of Adjustment has been published and posted in all appropriate locations. We have, um, our chair is missing right now. We're gonna have Mr. Book act as interim chair. Until Ms. Bradley gets here, she will be here. She's just running late, delayed out of New York.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm switching seats at the moment. All right, first up on our agenda is roll call.
Mr. Book.
Here.
Ms. Fridge.
Here.
Mr. Hurley.
Here.
Mr. Costanzo.
Here.
Mr. Ricardi.
Here.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Here.
Mr. Lovacco is absent, and Ms. Bradley is finally.
All right. I think we have a resolution, do we not?
Yes, we do. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, Moisey Lantham, block seven seven zero one, lot twenty, thirty-nine, Drexel Drive. Eligible to vote are Mr. Book, Ms. Fridge, Mr. Hurley. Mr. Lovacco is absent, and Ms. Bradley.
Okay, I need a motion and a second on that resolution, please.
I'll make a motion.
Who are the other? So I don't think I can second it.
Mr. Hurley, Ken. Can you second the motion on this resolution?
A second. Roll call, please.
We have Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Fridge.
Yes.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
And that's all, and it's approved, and that concludes the resolutions.
Any minutes?
No, I didn't do any minutes, so we have no minutes tonight.
Very good, then we're gonna move right on to vouchers. All right.
What do I have here?
I have two vouchers, uh, King Reporting, uh, June seventh, twenty twenty-three, for twenty-five dollars, and Recording Secretary Invoice. King Reporting, line total, uh, hundred and fifty dollars for June seventh, can I have a motion and a second to pay the bills?
Motion to approve all vouchers. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Fridge.
Yes.
Mr. Hurley.
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it.
Good, thank you. So as I'm looking at the agenda, I see nothing else on here for announcements. You got an announcement?
I do, I do have.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Book. Um, I have two, uh, announcements tonight, number four, application, Dan Rack Excavating LLC. Block twenty-one, four oh one, lot fifty-two. That's being carried to the July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment with no additional notice required. The applicant has waived time. Uh, also, number five. Uh, Joseph Weber, um, prior owner, Joseph Rabbinowitz, block fourteen two oh one, lot nineteen. Is also being carried to the July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, uh, zoning board of adjustment meeting, no additional notice shall be required. Um, and the applicant has waived time.
Uh, councilor, unless I heard you wrong. Dan Rack, on my calendar, it's number five, you said four or five, and then I just mishear you.
Uh, I have, I have Dan Rack as number four, and I have Joseph Weber as number five.
Okay, and on, uh, what's your addition date, what's your addition date on your dentist? Five, I have five twenty-four, twenty-sixty.
So that's, I think that's the old.
We have the, I have the old one, too. Uh, thank you. Mystery solved.
The old application number four was, uh, I believe there was an issue with that, and it was moved to June twenty-first, with notice required.
Okay. Nothing further on announcements?
Nothing further.
Thank you. All right, with that, then I'd like to move to have our professionals, uh, introduced and sworn in.
Gentlemen, thank you for raising your hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do, yes.
If you would please state your names and your positions with the board.
Evan Hill, board engineer.
Ernie Peters, board planner.
Jeffrey Papporo, zoning officer.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to the agenda, then, the first one I have up is. Applicants for fifty-five Forest Drive, variance three, four, six, seven. Uh, block six, one oh five, lot five, on fifty-five Forest Avenue.
To the chair, did we announce that we only have so many members and blah, blah, blah?
Correct. So, uh, just for the, um, members of the public, as well as, uh, the other applications on this evening, currently, we only have six members. Again, um.
Certainly, fine, but. Oh, we have.
We have six members.
Who's the new man?
We have six members, um, and our seventh will be here. Um, late, albeit will be here, uh, so, uh, I think that might affect going forward on those particular applications, I'll leave that to the applicants' counsel. Um, but it's something we'll discuss at the time, uh, deemed appropriate once we're through this, uh, particular variance application. Uh, for the variance application, just so you're aware. Um, it's not a use variance, so all you need is a simple majority, okay, uh, in order to be approved. On a use variance, you would need a super majority, so you would need five yes votes, but that's not the case for your particular applic- application, so that's not particularly applicable to you.
Understood.
All right.
All right, so sir, if you would, would you state your name clearly for the record?
Yeah.
Raise your hand, and councilors will take it up.
Absolutely, uh, Anthony Golt, A-N-T-H-O-N-Y-G-O-L-T.
Thank you for raising your hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you very much. You've already stated and spelled your name. If you could, please provide your address, please.
Address is fifty-five Forest Drive, Jackson, New Jersey, zero eight five two seven.
And you're the owner of the premises, which is the subject of this application?
Yes, that's correct, my wife and I.
Thank you very much.
How can we help you, Mr. Golt?
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I'm submitting to you an application for a variance, uh, to replace our current wooden fence, which has deteriorated, uh, significantly, uh. As I understand it, the fence as it stands right now would require variance anyway, uh, and also request and to extend the fence, um. Out towards North Carolina Drive, uh, to the property line, and towards Forest Drive approximately sixteen feet. Uh, variance is required, as I understand it, because this is a corner lot, so technically, my side, um, facing North Carolina Drive is also considered a front-facing of the property.
Mr. Golt, if you will, maybe you can help us out a little bit. As we're looking at the screen. All right, and we're looking at, I guess, the right side of the property. There's that bold line, and then there's some Xs above the bold line. Are you seeing what I'm seeing?
Yes.
Is that bold line, is, is there a fence there now?
There is not, that is where I'm proposing to put a new fence.
All right, and the new fence that you want to put in there is a six-foot vinyl fence, is that the idea?
That is correct.
All right, and then as we move towards North Carolina Drive, again, I see a bold line, is there a fence there now?
There is not.
That's where you want to put, you want to continue your six-foot vinyl fence, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, now, one of the things that we often seek when we're dealing with these issues is the issue of a sidewalk, and I see in. The survey of this property, which is an unusual survey, but that's a different day, a different dollar. Um, there's a, there's a sidewalk there.
There is.
And, and are you proposing, uh, to have that fence right up against that sidewalk property line, or are you proposing to have the. Fence approximately three to four feet in, which is typically what we look for, we do not like the idea of that fence right up against the property line.
Okay, so the proposal is to place the fence up to that sidewalk or a few inches back where the property line is, but I'm amenable to moving that back a little bit if necessary.
Um, our engineer will help, he keeps this all in his head for all of the multiple applications that we go through, so he knows automatically some of the questions. I'm gonna have Mr. Mr. Hill, would you jump in here and help the applicant out in terms of?
Sure, um. So in this case, the applicant is, is requesting to place the fence right, for all practical purposes, right along the property line, along North Carolina Drive. While not identified on this survey, typically, there are shade tree and utility easements along, or that encroach within people's properties, so the board. Has historically, uh, requested a minimum of six feet from the property line, just in case there is, uh, an unwr- either, if it didn't show up on your survey, just as a protect. Like a safety or protective issue here, um, for the fence to be a minimum of six feet from the property line. The other aspect that the board likes to evaluate is your neighbor, in this case, to the, the west. Um, and where their driveway may be in relationship to your fence, and whether or not the fence encroaching that far towards the road would create a line of sight issue. For a vehicle backing out of their driveway. So in most, if, if you look at your survey, you have your, we're gonna start at the road, we're gonna, we have the concrete curb, you have a four-foot wide grass strip, you have a four-foot concrete sidewalk. So that's eight feet right there, correct?
Okay.
Uh, what most people, when they're backing up and they stop at, they stop their vehicle to look each way, that's usually on average ten to twelve feet.
Okay.
So by further moving the fence six feet in off of the property line, that also provides the adequate line of sight for somebody backing out of their driveway, so your fence doesn't obstruct their view. So those are the two, those are the primary two reasons why the board has historically asked for fences to be no closer than six feet to the property line in these instances.
Is, is that something that you're amenable to, sir?
Um. So, yes, I, I would be amenable more so to bringing that line four feet in, if we could do that, because I believe, based off of my measurements this morning, that would put me. Extending that fence line sixteen feet out, which would make it even two panels, eight-foot panels on the vinyl fence.
Well, you see, part of, part of the problem, and, and our engineer, I think, was trying to, um, import that to you is. this, this survey is, is not a really good survey. It's unusual in that I don't see who it's, who it's certified to, and there's some particular information that I would typically see in a survey that we're not seeing here. And we are concerned about those sightline issues. We are concerned about, um, uh, different potential restrictions on where that fence can be. And thus, the suggestion that you put it out six feet might very well ameliorate or eliminate the concerns, and that, that's why this, this, this six foot is, is mentioned, and that's why we're kind of suggesting it, that, uh, you know, that, that the six feet be the one that you accept. Four feet might be problematic, but it's your application, and if you want to, if you want to say no to the six and move forward on the four, that's fine, and then the board will consider it, make a decision. But I just want to make certain that you understand what the engineer and the information that he was trying to impart to you.
Uh, excuse me, understood. Um. Well, let me ask you this. I guess I'm, uh, forgive me for being naive and not familiar with the process, right? So i- i- if I stick with the four feet and the board does not approve that, can I then reapproach and go for six feet back, or how does this work?
See, well, see, now you're asking me a, a legal, technical, procedural question. So now what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna pass the buck to my counselor.
Okay.
And he's gonna tell, he's gonna tell you how that works.
So essentially, if you're, if you're, if you're gonna apply for a variance and you're denied the, the fence, you can't really ask for it again.
Okay. All right, understood. Uh. Okay, so with that being said, then let's try to, um, uh, appease you guys as best as possible and take that six feet back.
So then, let's move to the back property. Is there a fence there now?
On the back property line? Yes.
And, and that's the fence that you want to replace? You want to take down that old one, and you want to put up a new six-foot vinyl? Do I have that?
That, that is correct, yeah. There is a six-foot wooden fence there now, uh, all the way around the perimeter of the property. Um, and out towards North Carolina Drive, it is extended out. It's actually designated on the survey as wood fence there, uh, just to the right of the uh, in-ground pool and concrete, uh, patio. Uh, so all of that being taken down and replaced with a vinyl fence.
And then if we're looking at the screen again, just so you can follow me, so all the way across the back of the property, you have a, a, a yellow highlight. That's all currently a wood fence, correct?
All except for the portion, uh, that extends beyond the current wooden fence on North Carolina, uh, facing North Carolina Drive. So that highlight shows everything that I'm wanting to replace. Uh, but the existing wooden fence right now does not go all the way out to North Carolina Drive, if that makes sense.
I'm taking it where the X marks are. Is that where it begins? You finish.
Um.
So, for the chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if you're looking at the survey, let's start to the left of the house.
Yes.
Uh, there, currently, there's a wood fence there. Uh, if you look at the, the property line also to the south, there's currently a six-foot high wood fence there. To the rear, there's currently a wood fence there just past the in-ground pool, and then you'll see the line with the, the squares in it. That's the location of the existing wood fence that he's gonna take down, and he wants to move further out towards North Carolina Drive. Now, I believe, six feet away from the property line, correct?
That's correct, yeah. So, uh, thank you for the laser pointer.
And then it will come back into, uh, then it will come back and join the side of his house, um, on the north side. Um, also to note is there's an existing frame shed identified on the survey. Well, it's not part of the application. Uh, it is an existing shed, right?
That is correct.
Did you put that in there, or was it there when you purchased the house?
It was there when I purchased the house.
That fence is anywhere from two points, uh, from zero point one to two point nine feet off of the property lines accordingly, which would also require variances. I think you just kind of wrap it into this application and, and load on it accordingly.
Uh, in terms of wrapping it into the application, Mr. Hill, that would involve leaving that frame shed in its current location. Uh, sir, do you intend to take that shed down, or did you want to leave it there, is?
Mm, my intent is to leave it there, yes.
Leave it there? It's still a functional shed? It's in decent shape?
It is, yeah.
You use it for storage of various sundry things?
Yeah.
It's. Uh, there's, there's no utility hooked up to that, is there?
No, no.
Do you know the approximate size of it?
Um, I believe it is a ten-foot by ten-foot shed, but I'm not entirely certain on that.
And, um, and I take it you're not sure whether or not there was ever a permit pulled for that shed, or it was ever approved?
No, i- i- it was discussed as I was going through this process, um, because I also understand that technically my pool here, uh, the edge of it extending beyond the face of my house would technically also require variance, and uh, that pool, to my knowledge, has been there at least twenty years. Um, I'm not familiar of any other variances that have been filed for these.
So, counselor to you, is it, in terms of, uh, this application, if we're, if we somehow pull into the application and clean up the, the, the frame shed, is that something that we can do?
Yes. Yeah, I, I, I think we should, I think, based upon what the applicant just stated, I think we should wrap the fence, the shed, and the pool into this particular resolution to make the, make everything nice and neat. Nice and neat.
And a- as to the pool, as, as to the pool, what aspect of the pool would actually need variance consideration? Where, where is the, where's the issue? Because I'm not seeing it readily, is it?
I, I believe the, the issue is with this portion of the pool here, right at the very end, that extends beyond the boundary of my house here.
So it would not be the sidewalk that's associated with the pool. It would be the portion of the pool itself, which is probably only about two feet of the pool forward of the north or the side of the house.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Um, I don't have any other questions of the applicant board members, any of your questions?
Through the chair, I, just a clerical clarification. I believe the applicant is to, uh, fifty-five Forest Drive Company?
Yes.
Do we need to clear, and you, you indicated that you reside there, so what's your association with fifty-five Forest Drive Company?
So the explanation on that, the title to the house is in mine and my wife's name. The application was presented as fifty-five Forest Drive Company because of what's, uh, referred to as Daniel's Law. Uh, I am law enforcement, and so I made a request through Daniel's Law to have my name, uh, removed from official records. This was the way to resolve that.
Acceptable. What?
That's acceptable. Thank you for the explanation.
Yep.
Uh, through the chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify for the record, you're, th- this, this particular application, your, your home is on a corner lot, is that correct?
That is correct.
So you, you technically have two front yards, but no portion of this fence goes to the forward portion of the dwelling, correct?
That's correct. The, the proposal for the new fence here, uh, still stays behind the front-facing of the property.
Just wanted to clarify for the record. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other further, any further questions for the applicant board members? None? Sir, anything further?
No, thank you for your time.
Uh, no other testimony?
No, sir.
With that, then I will close this portion of the hearing, and I will open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard on this application? I heard a phone. It can't be the public. Uh, I see no one coming forward, thus I'll close the public portion. All right, board members, it's ours. Um, motions, discussions?
Put forth a motion to approve the application as set forth that, uh, will accept testimony that the fence will be approximately six feet from the property line on the North Carolina Drive side of the property. Uh, will also accept that the existing shed with no utilities and approximately ten by ten will remain in its present state at, in its present location, as well as, um, extend approval to the non-conforming in-ground pool, which per testimony, I believe, extends approximately two feet past the, the side of the house, uh, encroaching into the front yard setback. And that is my motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No discussion. Um, I'll briefly comment in regard to discussion. I believe the applicant has made out, made his case out. He's, he's stuck with a framed shed that's right up against his property line. He's got an in-ground pool. It's slightly over that setback. Uh, these are conditions that would constitute hardships. It would be, uh, it would be, the, the pool, it's, it's de minimis infraction. Um, and, and thus, I, I believe the applicant has made his, has made his case, so, um. With that, there's no further discussion. We have a motion. We have a second. Don't call, please.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fridge? Yes. Mr. Harley?
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Riccardi?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith?
Yes.
Application's approved.
Application's approved, sir.
Thank you so much.
Well, you take care.
You too.
All right. Um. Number two on the, on the agenda, even though I've got the long dated one, I think it stayed the same, is, is Tana Siegel in Yotzer War Lakewood, a New Jersey nonprofit, use variance three, four, one, one? Ms. Jennings? Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Jennings.
She wished to move forward.
Ms. Jennings, uh, as, as you can see, uh, and as I prior, uh, previously put on the record, we currently only have six board members, um. Ms. Bradley, uh, our acting chair is on her way. She was delayed out of New York, um, due to the current circumstances outside the building. Um, and my question to you is, would you like to wait for her? She's approximately twenty minutes out.
I think it would be prudent to wait for her, or if she could dial in, since you do, do everything on Zoom, I think, still. Maybe she could just be listening in her car.
I wouldn't personally know how to do that, but if I can have a moment to get through with Tony, um, maybe we can make that happen.
If not, we'll obviously wait.
Why don't we take a? Twenty-minute reset?
Yeah, I don't know if we want her concentrating and talking while she's driving.
If she is, yeah, if she's driving, yeah, all right. Why don't we, why don't we call recess?
We're gonna take a, um, a fifteen-minute break. Oh, we'll take a half-hour break, and we'll reach out for her to see where she is in her travels, and then we'll, we'll reconsider whether or not additional time is necessary, and we'll advise Ms. Jennings on, on her ETA.
I did, uh, just to clarify, I did text Ms. Bradley. She is, she did advise, she's twenty minutes out.
Okay. Now, we're gonna break for twenty minutes. Thank you. Okay. 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 Okay.
We're back on the record, uh, we have application number two, uh, before us, uh, just for the purposes of the record, our, uh, acting chair Lynn Bradley is now um, here, so please let the record reflect that we currently have seven board members, um, including our acting chair, Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, good evening, for the record, I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Valens, Golden and Spitzer, on behalf of the applicant. As the board is aware, the applicant is here this evening seeking use variants approval only to operate a small all-girls high school with a maximum capacity of twenty students and property located at nine fifty Maplehurst Avenue when identified as lot twenty-six and block two-one-five-zero-one on the township's tax map. The property is located in the industrial zone where operation of a school is not permitted. The record will show that schools are inherently beneficial and thus satisfy the positive criteria as a matter of law. With respect to the negative criteria, the board is to undertake the four-part CICA balancing test, which involves one, identifying the public interest at stake, two, identifying the detrimental effect that would ensue from the grant of a variance, three, determining whether any detrimental effect by imposing reasonable conditions on the use, and four, balancing the public interest at stake against the public detriments, and determine whether unbalanced the grant of the variance causes substantial detriment to the public good. The record will show that the proposed use is significantly less intense than permitted uses in the industrial zone such as warehouses, wholesale and distribution establishments, and light manufacturing, to name a few. In comparison, the traffic impact and noise impact when the permitted use is far more intense than a small twenty-student school proposed. In the event the board grants use variance relief, the applicant will return to the board to secure site plan approval. In support of the proposal, the applicant will rely on the direct testimony of Dr. Siegel, a representative of the applicant, Andrew Janu, the professional planner, and the applicant's architect, Shimon Greenbaum. Uh, as a matter of record-keeping, the applicant's receipt of just one report, the Remington and Vernick report dated July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, don't believe there is any additional reports. Uh, with that, we can, uh, begin our testimony. You wanna swear him in?
You would please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
If you would please state your name, spell your last, provide your affiliation to this application.
Yakov Siegel, Y-A-A-K-O-V, my last name is S-I-E-G-E-L. I am, I guess you could say the owner of the school with my wife, Tana Siegel, who is the applicant, and we operate the school together.
Okay, thank you, um, if you could, what is the role of the high school operation?
Why we
Your role?
Oh, my role in op, in the operation is I, I do all the backend, um, finances, paying teachers and things like that, and I oversee curriculum and the staffing and the enrollment of students.
And how many years have you been operating the high school?
Three years.
Okay, and if you could just discuss the history of the proposed high school, why did it begin, et cetera?
The high school began because I actually had a daughter who was in the, I had two daughters, who was, who were in the private school, the religious private school system in Lakewood, and their needs, they, they had special needs, both academic and religious-wise, they weren't fitting into the strict religious guidelines of existing schools, and they could, they, they, they were no longer able to function in the regular schools. One of my daughters stopped going to school, I sent her to school in Miami, Florida, where my parents live, and it wasn't a good situation, she didn't, she needed to be closer to home, so when my second daughter started to struggle in the schools and didn't have a school to go to, and she had some friends that were the same way, we put together a homeschool of five or six girls, and they were, they did online study, and it was basically me and me, and then we got a few other teachers to come in and give them religious studies during the day. We started a homeschool, from there, um, we were so successful that year that we continued, even though my daughter soon graduated, she's now, she just came back from a year in Israel, post-high school year, there are more girls that need this type of education, this type of service, and so we continue doing it.
And this evening you're looking to get approval to operate at no more than twenty students, is that correct?
Correct.
And you're operating out of a single-family home, uh, right now on the property, correct?
Correct.
And that is owned by a member of your family?
That's owned by my father-in-law, my wife's father bought, bought the house, when we, when we could no longer operate out of the house, one of the, we were operating out of one of the student's parents' living room, but after, you know, that only lasted for less than a year until she couldn't house us anymore, so I found this house in an industrial zone, and when I was looking for a mortgage, my father-in-law decided that he will buy the house and let us operate there.
Okay, and what are the hours of
Counsel, can you just clarify, give me some clarification on the dates, you said, you said he started teaching about three years ago, so how long was he in his home and then when, how long has he been in the present location, can we get clarification on that, please?
I don't have the dates in mind, I could, I could get that for you, but I believe that we I don't even know where we are, twenty twenty, so I, I believe probably twenty twenty-one, we, we, we were looking for the house, we went to this location.
So preface to twenty-one, you were teaching in your, in a, in your home?
It wasn't my home, it was, it was a, one, one of the student's parents in Tom's River, actually, we were operating out of her living room.
So then, from top, then, so then you, you began in Tom's River teaching in, in a residence, how, how many pe, how many students?
I believe there were six students.
Six students, and then I need like a, a, a reference point as to then you moved to Jackson, is that correct?
Yes.
From Tom's River to Jackson?
Yes.
Did, so you moved the same six students, or was that an increase or decrease?
It was this, I, I, I it was maybe eight or nine students at that point, I don't think they were the same, some students left the school, some new students joined the school, it was about eight or nine students when we moved in.
And you moved to Jackson approximately when, the, the facility moved to Jackson approximately when?
Approximately twenty twenty.
Would it be in the fall twenty twenty, the spring?
I wanna say that we started in September twenty twenty, in the beginning of the school year, but I don't have that, I, I can't testify to that exactly.
And I, I just, why, why would, why is it difficult to testify to that, you don't recall?
I, I, I honestly don't remember what date or what, what month we moved in.
Alright, thank.
So just so the record's clear, I am looking at the deed for the property, and it looks like it was purchased in February of twenty twenty-one. Okay.
Through the Statement of Operations for this school?
Yeah, I believe in the application packet, there should be a statement of operations, we're getting into that. There's a whole rider, talks about the operation of the school, the use variance.
And did he say this is a religious school or is not a religious school?
It is a religious school, correct, for the Orthodox Jewish girls only.
They receive high school diplomas?
Correct, well, let him testify, we're gonna get into all that if you would just let us get our direct testimony on the record, and then we can go into the questions, so going back to the, the questions, the school itself, how, what days does it operate?
School is Monday through Thursday, nine AM to four PM, no school on Friday.
Okay, and when we say the kids are homeschooled, uh, what is the program that they follow?
There, it's based off an online, um, homeschool course called the Selus. Um, that, that's the bulk of the high school diploma or the education, secular education is done online through a Selus, it's, they have, it's an acc, it's a accredited online homeschool study program, and, yeah, and then we have religious, we, we have religious teachers come in and give religious courses.
Through the chair, is that cert, is, is that through the state that that's?
It's not through, through the state of New Jersey, no.
The issue, then how is it certified, who certifies the?
There's no accreditation requirement for private schools. Um, but at the end of the day, they do receive a high school diploma, that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and if you could just describe, what are the current classrooms set up, where are the classrooms located?
There is one classroom in the basement, um, that's where the, the students are for most of the learning.
Okay.
The day.
In addition to the online courses that they're taking, they also take some electives?
Yes, they take, there, there's an art class, we, they go, they go out to a, a, something, sometimes to a, they have gone to equestrial, there's a farm where they are with horses, and there are, um, the religious classes, and we have other electives, I don't know if I can is there's art, there's, there's I guess literature, that's one, that's I guess literature. That's one, that's one of the regular courses.
Okay, and you said that you bring teachers from outside to teach those courses, the elective courses?
Yes.
And then you have people who teach the religious courses?
Yes.
And are you on-site teaching any of the courses?
I come once a week to give a religious course on Tuesdays.
Okay, and when the school's not operating, does someone live in the home? Is the home used as a single-family residential home?
No.
Okay, when the students attend high school, how old are they?
They are from fourteen to seventeen.
And right now, how many students are enrolled in the program?
Right now, we have nine students.
And you're looking to get approval for no more than twenty, is that correct?
Correct.
So that's the most growth that you anticipate having?
Yes.
Now, on any, one given time, how many faculty members are at the site?
There are usually two faculty members, a teacher and somebody to supervise if the girl's not with the teacher.
And is that your wife, Hannah?
It's, my wife is the main person.
And the students, how do they get to the school?
They are dropped off in the morning and picked up at four o'clock.
And are they dropped off by their parents? Or they come in a bus? How do they get there?
They're dropped off by their parents.
Okay, so none of the kids would arrive at the school on a bus?
No.
Okay, what about recreation? Do they participate in any type of outdoor activities, sports, recreation?
They have, they go outside on the property, but we don't have any official sports.
Okay, and what about scheduled events? Do they put on any kind of plays or shows or anything like that to their parents that they would, their parents would come to the site, draw a large crowd?
No, that hasn't happened.
Okay, and what about deliveries? The girls are there for the day from nine to four. Do you provide any kind of breakfast or lunch for them?
They bring their own lunch.
Okay.
We do not provide food.
All right, there's a kitchen facility, though, because it's a single-family home. Are they permitted to use the kitchen?
No.
What other types of deliveries do you anticipate coming to the site?
I don't anticipate deliveries to the site. We sometimes have Amazon packages delivered for notebooks or things like that. We had an iPad delivered, but no, no major deliveries.
Okay, that's all the operational questions I have for this witness.
Through the chair, are you indicating there was no events? So is there any type of graduation ceremony or anything of that nature as they go through the grades?
Yes, we have a graduation ceremony actually next week, but it's in a restaurant in Lakewood.
So, so your ceremonies are off-premises?
Off-premises.
And then you also stated that you presently have one classroom in the basement, is that correct?
Correct.
And I guess we'll get the testimony, how large that, that?
Yeah, the architect will describe what's going on in the building. We had to make sure that the building was suitable and could be converted and meet all building code requirements.
So to that testimony, you're currently teaching nine students of varying grades, is it by grade?
It's generally by grade, but like, like I said, most of the learning is done through a Cellus, which is an online program. So you could have a ninth grader doing ninth grade math and a twelfth grader doing twelfth grade math side by side with separate computers. For the religious instruction, there we'll bring a rabbi in or a female teacher. But that is basically, that's not really academic work. That's more you know, religious instruction. It's not, it's generally not text-based, so there we could almost always have all the girls in one class.
So to my point, your current, your testimony was that you're currently have nine students enrolled. You're proposing a maximum of thirty?
Twenty, twenty.
Or, sorry. Yeah, correct, I take that back. Twenty. Are you proposing that to expand that classroom in the basement?
I'm glad you asked that because you know, we have, we have had up to fifteen. And fifteen students has been our general enrollment over the last year or maybe two years. But recently, we had some students leave because we cracked down on some rules when it comes to, I don't, let's say marijuana use or attendance or things like that. We said you just can't be here if you're not, if you're not growing. So we had a few students, about six students leave over the past few months, so to, I honestly said nine students because that's where we are today. That's, I think that's what the question that was asked to me. But our operations are generally fifteen to sixteen students. And so we're asking up to twenty.
Yeah, I think what the architect will tell you is that we could fit up to a maximum of twenty. So when we were talking about it, I said ask for twenty. You may never hit twenty, but that's where you have a right to have twenty.
Through the chair, I'm sorry. Your testimony was that on breaks they go outside. I didn't hear, I don't recall getting testimony on the lot and what facilities, you know, how large the lot is and, and?
Yeah, the professional planner will get into all the specific details about the property.
Thank you.
For the chair?
For the chair? I'm sorry. Just, just wanted to clarify one part of the testimony. You had indicated that the dwelling is not, is not used at all. Nobody lives there, so it's not used as a dwelling unit. Is that correct? Okay, and that's been since the very beginning that you've operated here?
Yes.
Okay, now are there any plans in the future for anybody to occupy that house?
Can I ask a clarifying question? When you say dwelling, nobody lives there.
No, well, it's a single-family dwelling. That's, that's, that's the argument that's made in some of the documentation submitted to the board, which then goes to the fact of whether or not this is an accessory used to a single-family home. But the testimony that I've heard is that this is not being used as a home. Nobody lives there. It's a vacant structure unless there's a school operating there.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I think that on the weekends, sometimes the father-in-law.
I was going to say, it's not, it's not a vacant structure because my father-in-law, like I said, bought the house. He lives in Brooklyn. And when, and he likes to come for weekends. He's not here every weekend at all. I wouldn't say he lives there. But when he comes, he stays there in a bedroom upstairs.
A part of the school. And the reason I ask, and I apologize to you and to Ms. Jennings for not understanding what you're doing out there. You talked about homeschooling, but your father isn't there when the schooling's going on. So it's being used as a school, not as a single-family home. I suspect Ms. Jennings is going to get Mr. Janu to explain some of that to us, but unfortunately, the documents that were submitted, the testimony you gave talked about homeschooling. So I want to make sure that both the board and the public have a clear understanding of how the building's being used. It was purchased. You started doing this school. There was a violation notice. And now, three years later, you're here to ask for, I believe Ms. Jennings said you're asking for a use variance.
Correct.
For a school.
Correct.
Okay. And again, either to the witness or to Ms. Jennings, the third page of the application rider in subsection D talks about the operation of the high school. And it says in the second paragraph, with respect to the floor layout, the main living room area will consist of tables where the students can engage in their online studies. The main living area will also serve as a classroom where teachers will come to instruct the students in person. So that, that's changed. Now everyone's in the basement, correct?
Correct.
I'm just, I'm trying.
No, and look, it's been a long time. We filed the application on, in January twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. And so, yes, it has evolved as we have looked at it and have used it. And when we hired the architect to come in, said you have to have an architect come and testify, and what can we do with this?
Just trying to make it clear.
No, yeah, because we started with a notice of violation. That's how it started.
The only photos that are in this addendum apparently use the first floor, so I just want to make sure that the record's clear, both for your purposes as well as the boards and the publics.
And Chair Lady, may I, before, the consultants have absolutely confused me. Mr. Siegel, can you tell me exactly what is a homeschool operation?
A homeschool operation is where students are instructed outside of a formal classroom setting through homeschooling curriculum.
So you, but as you indicated, it is an online type of approach. Correct? It's online by the student?
Yeah, the Cellus is called, I believe, a homeschool program. I think a Cellus is, that's how it was introduced to me, that it's a program for students who are homeschooled.
Okay, that's, that's my problem here. That's what I don't understand. Why would not the student just stay home and undertake the Cellus program at home?
The, the answer is that the school, the school was designed because the students, A, needed or the parents wanted, I wanted for my daughter, that they should have a social aspect to school, that they should have peers and friends. And also the religious instruction is important, and a Cellus doesn't provide that.
Well, I understand the religious part is separate. I'm more concerned about, you indicated that the the school will issue a diploma upon graduation. And I guess that's issued by whatever entity the school is, correct?
Correct.
But there's no accreditation that's required by the state in this regard, correct?
Correct.
And what are the qualifications of the teacher or teachers that are used there?
The religious teachers are.
Forget the religious aspect.
Oh, the Cellus teachers? The Cellus, Cellus has, has, I don't, I don't, there's no licensing for teachers, but the Cellus has professional teachers teaching the courses. It's done through video and through, they have a curriculum and a syllabus. And they have a full, a full educational platform.
So we, so we, essentially what we're talking about here are two programs. One is the Cellus program and the, another section, which is the religious aspect, correct?
Correct.
The religious aspect, you have someone coming in to teach that. That's the teacher you were referring to before.
Correct. But the Cellus program, there's also a proctor, my wife usually is in the, is in the building. And she monitors what's going on, and she tends to the social, emotional needs of the students, so it's, it's a more wholesome experience than sitting at home with a computer doing a Cellus.
Okay. The other aspect that I got confused on now is the the structure itself. It is, it is, or it is not a residence.
I'm not a lawyer. I mean, it's a house, it's a house in an industrial zone that my father-in-law stays in sometimes on weekends when he comes. And when he's not there, there's, we operate this school, homeschool, whatever we're calling it, from Monday to Thursday, nine to four.
Otherwise, dominantly, the use of the structure now is the school.
For now, yes.
Thank you.
No, I have no intention of that, but the way the question was asked, I mean, my father-in-law could, first off, the school moved, I mean, it could one day be a residence. I don't know what, what the future holds, but today that's, that's what happens. Not Monday, Monday through Thursday, nine to four, the school's there, and when my father-in-law comes for weekends, he stays there.
Is there any regulation at all relative to your proposed use by the state, by a religious entity, any regulation at all? Or you just?
My understanding is that New Jersey doesn't require accreditation for private schools, but if they did, Cellus is up to standard. I mean, our school, I don't know how deep you want me to go in the history, but our school is.
Through the chair, if I may. Can you just clarify, the Cellus program that you utilize for the, we'll call it, for lack of a better term, secular learning? Is that accredited by the state of New Jersey?
Not by the, to my knowledge, not by the state of New Jersey, but I was about to say that I was introduced to it because there's a school in Florida that operates like this, and we're actually called Yotzer or Lakewood because there's a Yotzer in Miami, nothing, that was started by a woman down there for a similar purpose. And she runs off a Cellus, and I believe that in Florida, you do, private schools do have to be accredited, and she gives a full accredited, accredited Cellus diploma. And I know that her graduates go on to prestigious colleges, so I think a Cellus is is accredited, but I would have to look it up to let you know.
But not in the state of New Jersey, and it's not required for a private school. Just like all the other schools that we presented to all the planning board cases.
I'm still somewhat, I'm still somewhat confused because it seems to me that what we're talking about here, why can't I, for example, what school, it's online, or the University of Phoenix, or whatever it is, you can get a degree online. Could I just go in my home? Is that what this type of, is that what we're talking about here? I'd say I'll get five or six students. We'll make a deal with the University of Phoenix, and we'll have a school. I mean, is there any regulation at all?
No, there's no regulation. No.
Okay. Can you tell me where the nearest high school is for girls? Nearest one to this location?
Religious or public school? The nearest public school is.
Your proposed use, whether it's a religious aspect included?
The nearest high school for girls, I, there are schools right on Cross Street. I don't know which ones. There's a, there's a school called, I believe, Shiraz Chaim, down the, down the block on Cross and close to Prospect.
I've driven that area, and that's what creates the question. It appears that there is a school of this level nearby. So I guess it creates a question in my mind. Can you tell us what the need is for another school at this location?
That's, it's a good question. These girls are not welcome in those schools. The girls that we have in our school, because of either learning issues or religious defiance, or their level of religious conformity is not up to the standards of the existing schools, they're not welcome in those schools. So we do not have students that otherwise would be in the regular religious schools. Our students are either going to be in our school, or they're going to be on the streets, and honestly, they were on the streets before we opened it. And the reason why I started this, I'm not in the school business. I mean, I, like I said, I'm there once a week. This is not what I do for a living at all. I did this because my own daughter and her friends were on the streets. And that's no place for a teenager to be. That's the.
I thought you were presented as a witness based on your experience or training, or whatever it may be, education on this type of use, but that's not the case.
No.
No, it's just the applicant providing the factual information of how the school operates.
But he doesn't know anything about the operation of a school.
I think he said a lot of stuff about how the school operates.
Just told me he doesn't have any background. That's what's confusing me here. Now he's saying he doesn't have a background in the school uses. And yet you're telling me that he doesn't.
He just explained how the school works. I don't know why that's confusing.
How the school works. Okay.
Through the chair. Can you please, what is religious defiance?
Many of our girls don't adhere to the dress code in the schools, so their skirts might be shorter than what the school rule is, and therefore the school asks them to leave, or one of our girls dyed her hair a color that that her school did not approve of, and they asked her to leave, or things like that.
Mr. Siegel, if your daughter attended a traditional.
I'm sorry, if your daughter attended a traditional Orthodox school for girls, would the, I understand Excel is online, I get it, so just bear with my question, Ms. Jennings. Would the curriculum offered to her outside of the religious studies be any different than what she's getting? Would it be taught from a different perspective? I'm going to assume, I don't know. Excel is is not geared towards an Orthodox population? Yes or no?
No.
So I'm a little confused, and again, I'm going to ask you, bear with my question. I'm a little confused because you're referring to it as a private school, but in reality, their, their education is not private, their religious studies are private, correct? So I would, I'm not seeing you're talking about accreditation and it's not for a private school, but is it really a private school if we're talking about a homeschool and a homeschool accreditation course online? So that's where my confusion is, so help me understand, please.
I'm not a hundred percent sure what the question is, but I'll explain what.
So my first question is, my first question was the Cellus program. I understand it's a homeschool program. I don't know much about it, so forgive my ignorance. But my first question too was, if your daughter went to a traditional Orthodox school for girls, would she be getting the same type of education offered by Cellus, and you said no? So then my, my dilemma now becomes, Ms. Jennings and yourself have both referred to this as a private school. It's private in the sense that it's in a home, in a homeschool program, but I'm not seeing this the same way I would a private Orthodox Jewish girl school. It's, this is not a, this is a homeschool program, which, so if I, as a parent, whose children went through public school, if my children, if the issues with the skirts are all the same problems that your daughter's encountering, if I had that and did it homeschool, that's not considered a private school. The religious study, in my opinion, is the private part of it, but I'm not understanding how this is being considered a private school. This is a homeschool program. Or, help me understand.
Please, please let him. I'm not following it either, but so the program that you use that is, that these children. So the program that you use, that is, is that these children look at and study. Is that program, is that something that is used with a proctor?
Yes.
Is that the way it's conventionally used in the other places that you've seen it used?
Yes, it's used with the proctor and the proctor is very important because. So many of the students. Need redirection and need help with their, you know, they get stuck or they get distracted. And they need to be redirected throughout the day.
To five high schools, I was one that needed to be directed. So that's, so that's what I'm getting, I understand the homeschooling and how you're saying homeschooling, but this is not a program. That you take your child and put her in front like the college that they just talked about. This is something that the program is proctored and that proctor. Whether it be a teacher or a administrator is guiding them through these studies and keeping their disciplinary. Focus, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I, 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 that's what I'm getting from you, I just wanted to make sure that that was true. And as far as the, as the religious end of it. Just like any other, I went to schools that were religious and we had other teachings and. They go by something else, but this other program really teaches them, and I think you said math? Is that?
Math is one of-
So it's got itself programmed and that's what you're teaching.
Yes, but, you know, a- along the way, the. I, I don't know what the record reflects, I don't know if I said that they would get the same education in the regular typical schools. I don't believe I said that because I don't know if that's true. Because the education that they're getting here is very individualized and there is a proctor. My wife generally is the main person who knows what they're up to, knows what their struggles are, so, social emotional in addition to academic. And if they're stuck on, let's say, a math. Unit for too long, there will be an intervention, someone's going to sit down with them and say, where, where are you stuck? Why are you not progressing? In, in the regular school system, they don't have that level of attention and care. I, I don't mean they don't care, I mean that they don't have the staff or they don't have the tension, they have so many students. That these girls who need the special education are not getting it, now we're school they are.
And, and when you say special education, this is, um, that's your term, it's not a term of. Like I'm, I'm, I'm bad at the math. I needed help with math when I was in school, that's not necessarily what you mean by, by special.
Right, special, I said special education for lack of a better word of the tip of my tongue, to describe the individualized attention.
And, and I, I have one other question, it may not be for you, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. The, the school, when you say it's a private school, is this a non-for-profit entity or is this a profit school?
This is a not-for-profit and it's not-for-profit.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Uh, Mr. Siegel, I wanna focus and better understand if I can the need uh, that you are serving. And whether or not uh, there's anybody else in the community that is also serving that need. But first, I would like to try to focus, you used in your testimony uh, that the curriculum. Uh, services and, and I believe I wrote down special needs girls. Uh, but you didn't define what the special needs girls are, what those special needs really are. And having listened further uh, to your testimony. And it doesn't appear to me, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that these are not uh, special needs girls that have physical disabilities. Uh, the, 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 uh, the special needs arise in the form of some form of a social or emotional component. Which implies to me that there is some form of a, of a psychological issue. Uh, and, and how it manifests for them physically, that manifests in such a way. Uh, that it does not conform uh, to the orthodox, the typical orthodox community. And the orthodox community schools shun them, uh, so that they cannot or, or do not, or have been expelled from those schools. Is, is my brief summary even close to uh, to, to what your school is attempting to serve?
Yes, it's close, I. Yes.
Now with that. Um, I, I, I heard you say that your wife um, attends to their social and emotional needs. Now, I, I'm not a doctor, but if there's, if there's a, a, a girl in that age group. Is there somebody who has the qualifications, a psychology degree, a psychiatrist, a doctor? Is there some type of a medical or psychological overlay? Uh, that, uh, wherein these girls who have these needs are being attended to?
Yes, we have a clinical social, a licensed clinical social worker on staff. Who comes in for two hours a week, but does more work than that outside of the school with the girls. And we have several, at least. At least two that I think of offhand of the teachers that come in for religious instruction or for proctoring. Are, have social work degrees, I don't know if they're all clinical social workers, but they all have so- social work degrees.
The course material, now I, I'm not familiar with a cellist either, but the, the course material. And for lack of a, of, of a better way of describing it. It's, it's not course material that is. Um, or that would be taught to someone in a school system, so to speak. That isn't quite up to speed or on par with their other students. For instance, within the public school system, um, I, I have a, at least a little bit of, a, a little bit of knowledge. And if, if there is some student that is having difficulty, they may be evaluated by various professionals. And they may be put into some type of a, of a, of a specialized classroom. Where they get specialized support from specialized teachers. Because they can't learn at the same rate and the same pace as other students in, in, in the, in the regular ed classroom. Uh, do your students have that type of a, a learning disability?
Some of them do, some of them have been evaluated and identified with learning disabilities, some of them have not. But they all need a special, uh, they all need individualized attention. And they all do, did not function in the regular classroom with twenty, thirty girls and the class one teacher.
All right, but that's all within the, within the orthodox classroom, right? We're not talking about uh, students that were in the public school system, would that be a fair statement?
That's a fair statement, I mean, I, I, I can't, I can't testify as to why, but. The religious families do not. They're not sending their children to public school, so it's either you're in a, or in a religious school or you're not in school at all. And that's where we, we come in so that they can be in school.
So then that drives the following question. So we, we've established that the, that these students, these fourteen to seventeen-year-old girls. There is some emotional, psychological, or perhaps learning disability issue. And you're saying to me that before, at least I'm, I'm assuming this now, that before they can come into your school, there is some process whereby they would have to apply. And there would have to be some type of diagnostic workup to confirm that they are in need of the special services that your school provides. Is that a fair statement?
I wouldn't say diagnostic workup, but yes, there is an interview process and they need to. We have to identify a, a need, I mean, it's not hard to identify, by the time they apply to our school, they've already been in the. Mainstream schools and have been asked to leave or left on their own. And we have to identify that we, that they belong there, that they could function within our system.
All right, and then I guess my last question for the moment would be, are there any other schools that serve the same purpose? And the same need that you are proposing to them?
That's a good question that I've asked myself and researched just recently, and the answer is no. And if there were, to be honest with you, I wouldn't be doing this, because like I said before, this, this is not what I do for a living. But there are no other schools that are servicing these girls. I can tell you that there are schools that are, there is a school in Lakewood that's servicing girls who are. Drug addicted or have mental, emotional. Disorders, and then there are schools for high achieving learners. And there's no, there is no school locally that's servicing the, these girls.
Would that be correct if I said that, that the demand uh, for this type of, of, of need. Far exceeds what you'll be able to provide in a twenty, a max twenty student school?
I would, we, we could assume that, I, I, it, that, that makes logical sense, that hasn't been my experience.
So, so you don't have pending applications for more than, uh, you said you have nine now, but you don't have pending applications that would exceed twenty?
Not, absolutely not.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel.
A C C E L L U S.
Through the chair. So what I'm gathering from this is that these girls don't have learning disabilities. Because technically then they should have I E Ps and be classified, have, were they classified with special needs? In their old schools?
Not to my knowledge.
I mean, without a classification for learning disabilities, I don't know how you can determine that they have a learning disabilities. You, you can't.
Okay.
You agree to that?
I, I definitely can't, I can't say that they have learning disabilities without formal testing and without a formal diagnosis.
Right, okay, so my next question is, is this basically? A disciplinary school? Is this the point between the girls not being in school, being on the street, as you said? Is? I don't, I'm not really sure what kind of school this is, to be honest with you, because we just said that. The girls aren't classified with learning disabilities, but you keep referring to it, you know, as a school with special needs. It sounds more like a disciplinary school for defiance, what? Ramifications or what are your ramifications, are the girls allowed to be defiant in your school regarding their dress? Is there a dress code that they have to adhere to?
There is a dress code that they have to adhere to, and that's what I testified previously, that we had sixteen students and now we have nine, or fifteen students, now we have nine.
Well, you said that they were removed because of marijuana use.
I was giving, I was giving examples, so maybe one of them was using marijuana, another one wasn't adhering to our dress code. A third one wasn't getting, go, going, attending her classes or doing her cellist. But those types of, not, not, not adhering to our school standards. And then the decision is made that we have to have a functional school, we have to, for, for the benefit of the students that remain.
But I thought this school was be, you know, created because of these girls who weren't adhering to the other standards. That's why you created this school, because they were removed from a school for not adhering, but now you're removing them for the exact same reason.
That's a very, very good point, and it's something that. It's a learning experience for me, because you're right, we, we can't, and you, you can't help everybody. You can't help everybody, so I'm not faulting, I'm no longer today, sitting here faulting the schools. That couldn't accommodate these girls, because they have their own students that they have to. Provide education and growth for and support for, and they, they can't do everything, and that's why. We have school, we, we open this school because we can, we can tend to the needs of a percentage of the girls. And there, like I said before, there is another school that exists in Lakewood that has less. But less strict standards than us in many ways and dress and other, and other. Standards where girls that would not be able to adhere to our standards can get the education there. But the fact remains that the girls that we are servicing. Were not and are not being serviced anywhere else. And I've, I've researched that extensively because if they were, I would send them there.
Right, but the problem isn't being fixed, they're not getting the help that they need. Once they're removed from their other school, they're just going to you, but nowhere in between are they being counseled. Or given the help that they need, so obviously, that's why those six girls immediately regressed and did the exact same thing. And were removed from your school. I don't feel comfortable that, that. You have the facilities for these girls that they really need, and I understand you can't help everybody. But these are girls, they have one chance at high school and it's four years. And they need the help that they deserve. Because they don't wanna wear the skirt the right length, does not mean they should be put out on the street. And they need to be in a place where they can get the right help, and that's, that's how I feel, I don't feel comfortable that they're being provided. Counseling or, you know, the proper, um. Facilities that they need to be in. Do you know what happened to the girls that were removed from your school?
Yes, they're still, they still, they still keep in touch with, with the mentors, the teachers that I have, my teachers. I won't say my teachers, but teachers that come to teach courses in my school still take them out. At night, talk to them, they still are involved in social media groups. That my school's involved in, and that's by design so that they should feel connected. And they still have access to our social worker and. It's not, I don't know if it's relevant to the, to the variance at hand, but we, I mean, I don't know if now's the time to talk about it, but there are. Myriad examples of girls that have been helped, have done one eighties. I've seen girls that were, I don't wanna talk about anyone in public, but there were girls that had ma- major struggles, and we could talk about this off the record. Who a- after spending two years or two and a half years in our, in our program. Have turned around social, emotional wise, in addition to academic, a one eighty. And there, there, there are real life examples of that, so some girls are being, are being serviced. I would argue, I would say that every girl that's walked through our doors, whether she stayed. Until graduation or not, has benefited, but there is certainly the majority that have been helped tremendously.
And I think it's really admirable that you're doing this, because like you said, if these girls didn't go to you, they would be out, they wouldn't be in school at all. But I just would feel more comfortable if there was somebody there full-time. That was able to really help them with what they need. That's, that's all.
Me as well.
How I feel.
I agree.
Through the chair, can I circle back on operations, you had mentioned that operations are Monday through Thursday, nine to four. Um, it, it, what about the calendar year and how many years of edu- education is provided? Is it like a normal high school, freshmen, sophomores, junior, senior?
Yes.
Um, and, and what does the calendar year look like?
We, we, we have a calendar, they have off for the ju- for the religious holidays, for Sukkot, Pesach, it's about a week and a half each. They have off, um. In the summer, I think we go until June sixteenth or seventeenth, we start in September. And they have off Jewish holidays, other than that, we're basically operational.
Through the chair. It's not so much the who or the what, but it's the where for me. I'm very familiar with Maplehurst. It's basically a one-lane road, stuck between two major roads, White Road and Cross Street. No water, no sewer, no fire items, you're telling me you have students in a basement? That scares the hell out of me. That's one thing, I do think it's very commendable that you're trying to intervene in these young ladies' lives. I'm very familiar with some members of the community who have come from dysfunctional families, they grew up in Memphis, other parts in the south. And have been somewhat. Mentor and been able to make a life for themselves. Do you ever encourage any of your students to get GEDs, because I know several young ladies in the community, they couldn't get jobs because there are no school. They had no accreditation that the employer could reference. Is there anything that you do for life skills that should they become somewhat more distance to the community?
Yes, yes, and um, wanna be accurate, last year. Yeah, last year, we had a girl who was, because ninth and tenth grade, she was in a different school. Where she didn't earn any credits, it was too difficult for her to make up four years of. Credits in a cellist in order to graduate, and she wanted, and she was in twelfth grade, and she wanted to go on to college. And we actually, at, at our expense, the school hired a tutor to tutor her in GED. And she, I believe, earned her GED, but she definitely got tutoring for it.
Is that the exception or is that an option to all the schools, all the girls in your school?
That is, that was an exception and it is an option, as need be. If, if somebody can't, can't, we're, we're here to help the girls succeed, so if that's what it takes, that's what it takes.
And again, for me, it's not so much the who or the what, it's the where. To me, it's, it lacks proper services from fire suppression, sprinklers, access in and out of its home. It's not designed for people to be in the basement.
I believe the architect's going to testify that if this was approved as used variance, the building would be modified, and there'd be a secondary access point to get into the basement, because you're supposed to have two.
But it's been in operation.
Correct.
So that's not testimony in the record yet. We'll wait until we have the proper witnesses in order to address those particular questions.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any further questions for this witness? Ms. Jennings, would you like to bring up the architect?
Absolutely. Come on up, Shimon.
If you would please raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do affirm.
If you would, please state your name, spell your last, provide your affiliation and your credentials, please.
My name is Shimon Greenbaum, G R E E N E B A U M. I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, and I have presented before this board in the past. Shimon, S H I M O N.
Obviously, you were just here, so we accept your credentials.
Thank you. So, Mr. Greenbaum, you heard the testimony of Dr. Siegel, correct?
Yes.
And you were hired by Dr. Siegel, or the applicant, I should say, with respect to looking at the existing single-family home and advising as to whether or not it could be lawfully converted to a small school of no more than twenty students, correct?
Yes.
And if you could just kind of describe what you did to look at the school, to make this determination as to whether or not it's going to be able to be up to building code, access points, et cetera, and whether or not there are concerns that you might have with respect to the location and the fact that it's, where it's located that the one board member has questioned.
Yeah, so as for the location, I obviously, if it's a one-lane street, it's a one-lane street. The, 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 what we looked at, after speaking to Dr. Siegel and his wife about what they needed, there was one room in the house that actually could accommodate what they need if they had to go to the twenty students, and it was our recommendation to put the students in the basement, because there's, there's a large open room there, and there's a currently a hatch with the stairs to go out, out the back of the house, which would allow us to easily, when we come for site plan approval, easily take that out, change it to a regular outdoor egress stair, and be able to have our two means of egress. In terms of the sprinkler requirement, there would be no sprinkler requirement. We're way below all thresholds that require sprinkler in such a building. It's, it's a single-family house, it's only twenty people in the house. It would not
Would this remain a single-family house once you did these conversions?
The structure, we do not anticipate many changes to the structure. As I understand, the school operates on a razor-fin budget. They're there more as a service to the community than as anything else. These students are in desperate need, and Dr. Siegel and his wife have stepped up to the plate to fill that need. And many times, the parents can't afford more than what they're paying, and the school is operating on a razor-slim budget. We're trying to keep that as much as possible.
Sure, and it's a safety, there's no fire hydrants in the area. I have a problem with the where.
Understood. From, from a safety, from the building perspective and an I B C standpoint, we are compliant one hundred percent with code. We would be able to easily be compliant one hundred percent with code. One of the recommendations of the basement was specifically to be able to create a fire separation if there was a residence upstairs, being able to keep the students in one location and being able to separate the entrances so that we can have legal means of egress. That was one of the reasons that we, that we recommended the basement. If something had to change, because the board wasn't comfortable with it, I'm sure that we can look at other areas in, in, in the current dwelling that would be able to be commandeered, to be able to make that classroom that we need. Living room, dining room, together, could probably accommodate that amount of students based on a square foot per student. But the easiest, simplest, and safest way, in our opinion, within the structure. We don't speak about anything outside the, outside the structure. I'm not a civil engineer, and I don't do site surveys, and I, I did not check if there are hydrants around. I find it interesting that there would be locations that don't have fire hydrants around them, but
Maplehurst and Cross is the closest hydrant.
Okay, on this, you would know that. The, the overall structure is six, is one thousand six hundred twenty square feet of habitable space. I do not believe that includes the basement. The basement, the room that we looked at was over four hundred square feet. By code, we would need only four hundred square feet to house twenty students.
Mr. Greenbaum, good evening. You had mentioned the, that you're compliant with the I B C. What use group would this building as a school be in?
The, the school would be an E. The school would be an E, that one room, twenty students in a classroom would be an E-use school, educational use.
So the I B C use group would be called?
An E-use.
E-use. So are you saying that just the basement is going to be an E-use, and the rest of the house is going to be a different use? I'm trying to understand, so it's clear for the record, when you and your client leave here and go to the building department about what's going on. I don't want there to be a
Right, so we
Coming back here and wasting time.
From what we understand, these students will not be allowed access to the kitchen, but the, the upstairs would be kept habitable as a vacation home or weekend home for the homeowner itself. So we, in an abundance of caution, due to the way we imagine the building department would look at this, have anticipated having to separate the two uses with a fire-rated ceiling.
I appreciate the, the explanation, I think. Certainly, as a, as an engineer and planner, I remember you were here a couple of weeks ago to explain to us how we were going to turn a house into a dorm, or a garage into a learning space, and I want to make sure that to the extent you're, you're capable with this application to explain to the board those same things. This is what, this is what the, the building is required to be brought up to as we move forward, so that it be, it can be clearly articulated in a resolution, so that there isn't a a confusion when you go to the zoning office and/or the building department about what this is. Obviously, the use of the building from a building department perspective goes through I B C. We're going to, I assume Ms. Jennings and Mr. Jenner are going to talk about the planning uses of the building as we go forward. I just, I, I appreciate you taking the time and explaining to both the board and the public how this building needs to be modified, to be brought into compliance with the required regulations.
Right, so we, basically, what we would have to do is create a fire-rated ceiling between the the basement and the other floors, so that we have a use separation. We would be able to analyze that further. There is a way not to require that, because depending on the percentages and the rest of the building being compliant with an education use. So there are cursory, look at it, we, by, by only being able to make the second means of egress from the basement, we would need that fire separation between the basement and the first floor. These staircases as well, the, the one staircase to the basement, if we can cut it off at the first floor, the staircase itself would not have to be rated either. But we would have to provide a door between the staircase to the basement and the rest of the residence.
And through the chair, Mr. Greenbaum, I've not been in that department in a couple of years, but don't all E-users get reviewed by the state?
Not private schools.
Thank you.
Through the chair, can I get an education on what E-use is?
An E-use is an education, education use. Any, any K through twelve space that is used for educational purposes, classrooms, assembly spaces, anything that affects, is classified under I B C as an E-use.
Through the chair. Just something in your testimony caught my attention, and I want to clarify it for the purposes of resolution, if necessary. You're, you're here seeking a use variance to operate a school out of a single-family home. Are you seeking two principal uses in the same building?
I would say yes, because it sounds like the owner of the property anticipates being able to use this if he comes out here on the weekends from Brooklyn. So the bedrooms upstairs were not going to be destroyed, they would remain, the kitchen would remain. It's really the basement that's being utilized for the school.
Okay, and that clarifies the question I had. I just want to, I had understood that the, that the upstairs might still be used as a vacation home, so I wanted to clarify.
I think that's the owner's intent, so I believe the applicant could not waive his rights to the school, so that it's something the board has to consider.
Very good, thank you.
Through the chair, do you have a floor plan of this basement?
I do not have, we, again, we were in an attempt to save the client money. We, we did a walkthrough, we analyzed it. We, once we, we receive a use variance, when we go for site plan approval, we will be creating all the drawings required. Unfortunately, I actually myself have been to this building about four or five times for this specific application. I, I personally have not billed the client for that, because I know how much their services are necessary. And we've been trying to save them as much money as possible on the front end, so they can actually operate and help the students that they're trying to help.
Is there currently a restroom in the bathroom, in the basement?
The basement does not, we will have that one.
Through the chair. I know it's a use variance, but I, I've got to get this clear in my mind with regards to the basement usage. Is, is there any proposed, any other egress out of the basement other than the staircase?
We would have the main staircase of the house that leads to front entry, and we would have the rear staircase that currently leads to a hatch converted as part of a future application to make it a direct egress there.
What's a ha- hatch?
Right now, we have a
A Bilco door?
A Bilco door.
And are there any windows in the basement?
There are windows in this.
Will they be properly, again, I know it's a use variance, but will these windows be properly constructed for egress as well?
We would not need them, they're not bedrooms. We would have direct
So you're applying a residence code to a school setting?
No, a school, the school
Said the windows, there's no bedding, so you, by code, you're required to change the windows?
The, the only application that I'm aware of that allows a, a window as an, as an egress is a residential use. To my knowledge, there is no commercial use currently that allows you to use a window as an egress point. So we are providing two commercial egresses through the stairs and the Bilco door, we will change into a proper stair. That will allow us to have the accessibility requirement as well.
For the chair, I think we're hearing a lot of details on proposed changes, and obviously, I think, I think they're good questions. Is it safe to say that you agree to comply with all applicable I B C codes? For not only the, the E-use, but also the R-use?
One hundred percent.
As any future applications that you may be making as part of site plan, and then ultimately for building permit?
A hundred percent.
Just as a point of order, I would like to remind the board that this is a bifurcated application. We are hearing testimony from the engineer, but we are considering a use variance only at this point. These site plan considerations are valuable, but recall that they will have to come back with a site plan for approval. So currently, we're, we're only evaluating the use variance itself.
Through the chair, Ms. Jennings, I don't have a statement of operations. I only have this application rider.
I believe it's contained in there, or I thought it was. It's been a long time.
The application rider says hours are nine to four thirty. I just want to have clarification on that.
Oh, yeah, could you clarify the hours of operation?
The hours of operation were nine to four thirty. We also had school on Fridays at some point. Again, I don't remember the years, but they were changed. We stopped having school on Friday because the girls were, for the girls' mental health, I guess you could say, it was too rigorous, and they were, and we changed, we shortened the school day to four o'clock.
Thank you.
So I'll have to correct the statement of operations.
And Chair Lady may away while Dr. Siegel was still here, I guess I was. Dr. Siegel, just another quick question. Correct me if I'm wrong here, but the school is being created because of the special needs of some of these young ladies that is not being accommodated by the Orthodox school that's available to them. So my question is, can these young ladies go to, for example, a public school where the services are available and get religious instruction privately elsewhere?
Theoretically, I can't say no. They, they could do whatever they choose to do, but practically, the religious instruction is throughout the day, even during the secular studies, because the environment and the proctors and the mentors and the social workers are all religious and all with one, with one voice, so to speak, give, give the religious values and the religious message. So the educational, the religious education is throughout the, the, the operation, the experience, is experiential throughout the day, runs through the entire program. I don't know if that answers the question.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd like to bring up Andrew. Swear, man?
Sure.
Good evening. Good evening. If you would please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. If you'd be so kind, please state your full name, spell your last, provide your affiliation and your credentials.
Certainly. My name is Andrew Janiw, J A N I W, member of the firm Beacon Planning and Consulting Services, three fifteen Highway thirty-four, Colts Neck, New Jersey. I am a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, as well as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, currently serving as the planner for the borough of Carteret in the township of Livingston. I'm serving as a member of the state board of professional planners.
I didn't want to be rude and interrupt.
It's quite all right.
Thank you, Andrew. If you could, just for the record, you've had an opportunity to visit the site and the area around the site?
Yes, I've, I've been to the site on more than one occasion. I've reviewed your ordinances, your master plan, as well as the context of the neighborhood in preparation for this evening.
And if you could, could you briefly describe the proposal and give some more factual information with respect to the location of the parcel, how big it is, et cetera, for the board's benefit?
Sure. So the property is a one-acre parcel located on the northwest side of Maplehurst Avenue, and it is located within your industrial I-zone. The I-zone permits contractors' offices, showrooms, garages, warehouses, light manufacturing, medical and dental laboratories, printing, warehousing, research engineering activities, wholesale or distribution establishments, metal, paper, wood fabrication, food and associated industries, testing laboratories, and wholesale building material supply yards. So the industrial zone is a fairly wide range of relatively intense uses, uses that would be associated with truck traffic, employees, that kind of thing. The property is improved with a single-family home that's non-conforming to the zone, that, that home, we tried to find the date on it, but appears to predate the nineteen eighties. And that home was used until recently as a residence, it was acquired, and the school was established at this location. The variances that we're seeking this evening are for the D-variance for the school. We're seeking two principal uses at this location, and we have some existing non-conformities with the lot. The lot area is undersized for the I-zone, whereas two acres are required for the industrial use, one acre exists. Two hundred feet of frontage is required. The lot has a hundred and thirty-two feet of frontage along Maplehurst. The existing building has a side set back of twenty-eight point three, and again, these are I district requirements, that would be for a warehouse. The house is set a, a setback of twenty-eight point three, where thirty is required, excuse me. And there's a shed on the property that's set back eight point seven feet from the property, whereas thirty feet is required for accessory uses. And there's a shed on the property that's set back eight point seven feet from the property, whereas thirty feet is required for accessory uses. You've heard testimony from Dr. Siegel, as well as the architect regarding the nature of the structure and the program. I think it's important to understand that this is intended to be an alternative school for children that don't thrive in traditional settings. And there was a question from one of the board members about, well, can't they go to a public school? The, the issue here is that the students need special attention. Whether they've been classified or not, these are children that don't thrive in large group settings. And quite frankly, they are of the Jewish religion, that's important to the families to maintain that in, as a component of education. So this is essentially a program that blends a verified program of learning through a cellist. But also interacts with the religious studies, the religious traditions, as well as things like art. And things that are meant to integrate socially as well. So it's not something that can be done online alone, these aren't children that would thrive doing this at home, they, they, quite frankly, wouldn't do this. And I'd offer, I don't know if anyone's familiar with Monmouth County, there's an alternative school called Collier, which is very similar. Now, Collier does not provide the religious aspects, even though it's run by the Sisters of the Good Shepherd. But it is an alternative school for children that don't thrive in traditional settings. This is what I would call the equivalent here for the Jewish community in this area. These are, these are girls that don't thrive in, in the large group settings, need additional attention, need the proctors. And, and need to have someone monitored to make sure that they're focused, on target, and progressing, and if not, they need to be refocused. So I think it's important to understand that this is not something where they just go to look at a screen and punch in the cards. This is something that's very specialized, cellist happens to be a part of that, an integral part of that. But it's not the cellist program that brings these girls to this location. It's, it's the attention and the program as a kind of conglomerate education. Which is and includes to them the important aspect of the Jewish traditions. Having said that, in preparation for this evening, we did look at your master plan and is the land use law, because as this board knows, the applicant can't be granted a variance just for the applicant's sake, there has to be a public purpose. So your, your master plan talks about the I-zone. And coincidentally, it says while over fifteen hundred acres of industrial zoning in Jackson is established exclusive of the pine lands, only about a hundred and eighteen acres are utilized with industrial uses. A lot of the industrial zones are vacant or, or were utilized as housing and then rezoned to industrial. But there is a large vast component of industrial land that, that is not industrial in use. However, this property, and we can go to the next exhibit.
And just identify that for the record, please.
So is this going, this is Exhibit A two, if you could, we'll call it A two, and if you can describe what it is.
Certainly, this is an aerial photograph. They were sent, submitted.
They were submitted like a year ago, and we just brought them in again?
Yeah, these, these are dated August, actually, of twenty twenty-two. And I brought them on a thumb drive just in the event that they weren't here. But these, these were prepared on August twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Mark this for the record as A two, though. Go ahead, and if you would, just describe what
Yes, so this is an aerial photograph. The property itself is outlined in green. That's the subject property. The purple line that kind of runs on the north-south bias there, that is the municipal boundary between Jackson and Lakewood. You see, the property is located in the I district. There is a line to the rear of the property, which separates the I district from the R-one residential district, homes on the other side of that property are in the R-one, and further to the left of that property, you'll see an R-twenty residential district. But this is a budding Lakewood and is within the industrial zone. If we can go back to the other aerial, that's a little bit of a better close-up of the property. Again, this is also an aerial photograph dated August twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, in terms of date of preparation.
Just for the purposes of the record, we're going to mark this Exhibit A one.
And this outlines the property, and you can see the existing home sitting somewhat midpoint of the lot. So as you can see, the, the area around it is kind of distinct, there are homes there, there are home businesses there. In driving the area, there was a home business, we saw paint company vans, numerous vans, people that, parent painter works and runs his business out of the home. So we have those kind of uses in the neighborhood, as well as single-family homes. But it is within the industrial zone and could be improved with some of those uses that we talked about, that I believe would be certainly much more intense than what we are proposing here. In terms of the school that would operate limited hours, four days a week. Well, we look to the municipal land use law for special reasons, which are the public purposes of why this board should consider the variance. We would look at A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of development of all lands in the state of New Jersey in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, and welfare. When we talk about establishing the public welfare here, certainly educating children is of benefit to everyone. Providing an alternative school for children who otherwise wouldn't thrive in a traditional educational setting and need the attention and need the focus. I think that even elevates that in terms of providing something for the general welfare, because it's, it's kind of a hole in, in the system that needs to be plugged, and this is something that, as you heard Siegel say, without this, these girls may not have an alternative. Because of the importance of maintaining the Jewish education as part of their secular education as well. D is to ensure that development of individual municipalities do not conflict with development and general welfare of neighboring municipalities, the county and the state. This property, as I demonstrated, is very proximate to Lakewood Township border. Lakewood zones the property within their district R forty, and their R forty zone permits single-family houses, places of worship, public and private schools, portable residential housing. So this school is actually a good transition to the Lakewood zone, which would permit this type of use. So this isn't something that would conflict with your, with the neighboring zoning consistent with D in the MLU.
Excuse me, through the chair. Are you, do you have any knowledge of what's about to transpire once Cross Street is dualized with that R forty becoming R ten?
I, I am aware of that.
Okay, so I just want to, to understand that this area is in a constant state of flux.
Again, I can only speak to what the condition is today.
I understand that, but it's going to affect the lives of those people.
Understand that. And finally, M, to encourage the coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with the view of lessening the cost of such development and to the more efficient use of land. Here we have an existing structure on the property, it's a home, and it will be continued to be used as a vacation home. But you heard the architect testify that it's very readily adaptable to accommodate the limited number of students that could be accommodate, that could be taught here. It is an efficient use of land. The architect stated that the conversion of the basement would require some improvements to the structure, would require secondary means of egress, would require some sanitary facilities in the basement, would require some fire considerations in terms of fireproofing, the, the separation between the two uses. But it is something that can be efficiently done, and certainly much more cost-effective than building something new, tearing down, building new. So that, I believe, speaks directly to that purpose of zoning. And that brings us to the variance relief. When we're looking at the D-one variance here, you heard the term bantered about this evening of inherently beneficial. So the court's established in Saddle Brookley Board of Adjustment that there are three special reasons for a use variance. One is where the proposed use inherently serves the public good, and that is the case here. The inherent public good that's served here is the education of children. The New Jersey Legislature in two thousand oh nine amended New Jersey statutes forty fifty-five D four to define inherently beneficial as inherently beneficial uses mean, means a use which is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare. Such uses include, but are not limited to, hospitals, schools, childcare centers, group homes, or wind, solar, or photovoltaic energy facilities or structures. So the inherently, the courts define and legislature define inherently beneficial uses to include schools. So that is important, because not only is the school here that's something that's promoting education, but we have the religious aspect to the school as well. Which underscores the importance for the community to grow, to keep these children thriving. And this school in particular takes the children that are otherwise at risk of not getting the education and providing them significant individual attention, which gives them the best chance of completing their education. The proposed high school furthers the education, works to promote the character of the citizens attending the schools. And then we can see how this clearly meets the definition. When reviewing an application that includes inherently beneficial use, we have to understand that as this definition implies, the positive criteria of the D-one use variance is satisfied as a matter of law. Therefore, when we're dealing with inherently beneficial use, the focus becomes on the negative criteria and whether the benefits outweigh the detriments. The court case that speaks directly to the inherently beneficial use is known as the Sika v. Wall Township case. And that dealt with a head, a head trauma location in residential neighborhood. The Sika Court created what's known as the Sika balancing test, which is a four-pronged test that we should look at in order to determine whether the variance relief can be granted. The first is to initially identify the public interest at stake. And here, the public interest at stake is not only taking children at risk of not receiving a full education and giving them that education, but also doing that in conjunction with their religious practice, where they'll develop high moral character, preserve their traditions. And we believe this absolutely serves the community as a matter of law. The second prong is to identify the detrimental effects that would affect from the grant of a variance, and I always do these together. The third is to determine whether we can reduce any of these detrimental effects by imposing reasonable conditions on the use. So when we look at the potential detrimental effects here. One would be sufficient parking and traffic, a lot of that will be handled when we get to the site plan. But the intent here is that the students are dropped off on site, they're not bused to the program. They, they are, they're dropped off and picked up by a parent or a guardian. This isn't something that's going to create a tremendous amount of bus traffic or any disruptive traffic. Keeping in mind that this is an I-zone that would allow warehouses, research facilities, supply yards and the like. So we certainly think that the drop-off of up to twenty students between the hours of nine and pickup at four o'clock would be significantly less disruptive than what could occur under any of the permitted uses. No, my understanding is they will not.
Through the chair, are there, are there any walkers? There's nobody that walks from the neighborhood off White Road, Linda Lane, any of that stuff?
Dr. Siegel, could you please answer that question? Are any of your students walking to the school?
No. There are no sidewalks or curbs in the area.
Yeah, there are no students walking to the school.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, I'm not sure how we can guarantee that nobody's going to take a bus, because every student in New Jersey is guaranteed either busing or Aiden Lou.
Right, so we would prohibit the buses from coming to the site, so they're either going to get driven or get the Aiden Lou, but they're not going to take a bus.
Well, if they don't get the bus, they're going to have to be driven.
Yeah, by a passenger car or a van, not a school bus, no school buses.
So every student that goes there is then going to be entitled to the, the check from the state for the Aiden Lou?
Yeah, if that's the law, then they would be entitled to it, so one or the other, so what we're saying is, we're not going to have the buses.
Okay, so then if the students don't stay, I mean, there could be a turnover where these students are just, they're just getting the checks at this point, this
It's not really a consideration for this board.
Okay, I understand.
Madam Chair Lady, if I may, on that very point, you're not going to allow buses on the site, that can be a condition, correct?
Yes, that would be an agreed-upon condition, I discussed that with the client before the meeting started.
How do, how would we start, let's, let's say that there is a, in quotes, a request for the, the bus service from some of these parents. Couldn't the bus just drop them off right on Cross Street, let them walk up the driveway?
Well, we thought the buses might be an issue, so the client has indicated that he would prohibit them from coming by bus, that they would have to come by passenger or van.
So that would be a condition of approval?
Correct, that would be agreed-upon condition of approval.
The second issue that we've discussed about, discussed previously with the other witnesses, is sufficient interior space to accommodate the number of students. You heard testimony from the architect in terms of the size of the basement, the, the ability to accommodate up to twenty students, the proper square footage, the proper accommodations that will be created here to accommodate this. Then we look at the other negative impacts, or what I would call the nuisances impacts. Keeping in mind that this is in an industrial zone, so our, our baseline is what could permitted uses allow here. So when we're looking at things like traffic, noise, trash production, the proposed use of this, of this building four days a week as a school. And then weekends as a home, vacation home, is certainly going to be significantly less intense than the types of uses that would be permitted otherwise within the I-zone district. We're gauging this against industrial uses that permit warehouses and distributions and bakeries and contractors' yards. We're not nearly as intense, we're not going to create traffic at the hours that those facilities would create. Looking at drop-off around the nine o'clock hour, looking at pickup about the four o'clock hour, we're talking about no more than twenty students. And the students will be bringing their lunch, there won't be any cooking on these facilities. So when we're talking about the, the negative impacts of the use, this is a very low-impact comparison to what the zone would otherwise permit. We look at the character of this area, this is a one-acre lot, it has a home improved on it. It is somewhat transitional, it is in the I-zone, but we talked about what, what it looks like on either side of the municipal line or the zone lines. I do believe that this is something where the negative impacts on the neighborhood would be de minimis, given what could go here. And finally, when you balance that with the service that this building will provide to the twenty students here. I think on balance, certainly the good outweighs any negative impact on the neighborhood. So thus in satisfaction of the Sika test, I do believe that the use here is something that's noteworthy, something that should be lauded. It, it, it takes children that for a variety of reasons may be at risk of failing to have an education, impacting future generations and the like. And giving them some guidance and direction and, and turning lives around. These type of alternative scenarios exist elsewhere. You heard testimony that there are none in this area that service not only the needs of the students that are at risk, but also their religious needs in order to maintain their capacity within the community. The negative impacts of this are de minimis, given the I-zone here. I think this is a good application in terms of balancing the inherently beneficial use. And quite frankly, all the other issues I believe we'll be dealing with if the board acts favorably upon this at site plan. I do believe we satisfy the criteria under the Sika test and would welcome any questions you'd have.
Madam Chair? I have a couple of questions. One is the impact itself on the industrial zone. You, you spoke quickly, and I wasn't able to grasp the details that you were relating to the industrial zone, but I do have a concern. And that, as I understand it, we have so much of an industrial zone in the township. And so much of that has been used, and there's probably some still available. But by, by providing a potential use variance on, on this particular piece, what is the detrimental effect to Jackson on the loss of this industrial zone site?
Uh, none whatsoever. Can we go to the second slide here? If, if, if you look at it, this specific section of the industrial zone in the frontage, you'll see this, one, this property is undersized for the industrial zone. It's one acre where two acres minimum are required. So it would require relief regardless for any of those industrial uses. Uh, the second is, it's flanked by residential uses. So we'd either be in a situation where for industrial use to thrive here, you'd be looking at an assembly of properties, which would be disruptive to the neighborhood more so, uh, or integrating this use with a fairly benign four-day-a-week school and weekends when most people are home, you, it would still be a residence. So the, the impact on the residents would be minimal and the impact on the industrial district uh would be de minimis, given, I think we talked, uh, I read out of the master plan that at the time that was written of uh, of the fifteen hundred acres that were zoned industrial, only about a hundred and twenty were improved with industrial uses. So, and, and you can see here along the industrial use, there are other vacant parcels uh that can be improved, that would be better suited to the industrial uses that are of adequate size for the zone. This property isn't, so I don't think this will have any negative impact on the uh zone, not only because of the size, because of the context of the neighborhood.
My uh, my next question for you is, and it may be more of a legal question to our counsel and to Ms. Jennings, but I, I think you would agree that, and I believe the case law holds, that not, not all inherently beneficial uses are, are the same. There's often scale. Uh, some may be less inherently beneficial than others. Um, in this particular instance, uh, for this particular type of a, of a school is uh, does the analysis that you provide, because of the size of the school, is it less inherently beneficial than so, than a larger school with a larger population? And is there a criteria that helps make that determination? And then the last part of my question is, you provided an analysis under inherently beneficial uses for the school, but you did not provide an analysis for the second principal use. And are you suggesting that the analysis you provided for the inherently beneficial use applies as well to the vacation use of the property? And do you not agree that the vacation use of that property could very well impact and increase the negative impact on the inherently beneficial use of the school?
So, so, so let me start with that last question first. So this home at one time did function as a full-time residence and has multiple bedrooms. The uh intensity of use as a vacation home by the owner in conjunction with the school be at substantially diminished intensity than how it was previously used. So when we look at the secondary use of the vacation home, while it's not inherently beneficial, there, the special reasons here, essentially that the use exists, it will be diminished in intensity through the introduction of the secondary use, which is inherently beneficial. Um, and it won't have a negative impact because of the surroundings. Again, it is in, in a resi- residences on either side. Uh, it was residential, the lower intensity residential, it'd only be a weekend uh vacation-type home use. Uh, with respect to the scaling issue, when we look at inherently beneficial, as you're correct, we have to look at, for instance, uh, if we're looking at hospitals or, or uh, photovoltaic cells, we look at, are, are they needed for the area? Is the area devoid of a hospital? We wouldn't want to build four hospitals next to each other because then you create an area where they're not going to thrive. They've essentially gutted the market of, of their ability to operate. Um, here, we're looking at a segment of the population that's been defined to you as not served at all. There are no alternatives for these girls within the Jewish faith. Um, you heard Siegel say they'd otherwise be out on the streets. So when we're looking at the scaling of this, I would say this is at the top of the scale because there are no other alternatives related to these girls where they can achieve not only education, but the Jewish education that's important to their community and to be maintained within their community. That's important to the families that send their girls here, to the girls that attend here, that's why they go here. They don't thrive elsewhere and they have no other options. Mr. Siegel himself uh founded this because he looked at an option for his daughter in Miami where he found an alternative, nothing local. Um, so I think when we look at the uh, the scaling of this, I would say this is, is at the top of importance.
Uh, Chair Lee. Sir, a clo- uh, along those lines, um, do you have any experience with or knowledge of uh, a school which would be available only for religious instruction? In other words, my question before related to, could these young ladies go to a public school and seek the religious instruction elsewhere?
So I, I think when you look at how the Jewish faith educates their children, it's very important to integrate with the education, Jewish traditions, the Jewish religion. So when, when you heard Dr. Siegel talk about the fact that they're learning a Seles, they're doing that, but they're doing that in the context of also really receiving religious instruction, receiving supplemental things like artwork, which would be religious themed. Um, there are also the social aspects of community that are fostered by the girls of creating. Uh, you heard about social media platforms and the like. So it's important in the Jewish faith that all this is integrated. It's not segmented. I went to a public school. I attended catechism on Saturdays.
That's my point. That's my point, Mike.
But, but that's.
I haven't gotten the answer to my question. I don't.
So, so in, in, in the, in the Orthodox Jewish faith, that's really not an option. It's important to integrate the education with the traditions. It's, um, I think last week I used the term immersive. It is an immersive, immersive experience. Uh, a Seles was a wonderful platform of the secular education that can be integrated into this program because of the way it works. It will be proctored, but it will be integrated and the day will include throughout the day uh, religious instruction, religious traditions, and that's very important. Um, otherwise, these girls are at risk of not receiving an education at all.
So your answer is private religious instruction alone is not available?
That's my understanding, yes.
That you, that's your testimony?
Yes.
I have a question to piggyback that, through the chair. If not for the religious aspect, could they go to a public school?
They, they, they're Orthodox, so they wouldn't.
They wouldn't, but they could technically. Right?
Sure, technically you, your kids could go to their schools, but they're probably not going to.
They like short skirts.
Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Jano, um, I want to go back and revisit the, the two uses. The Dr. Siegel said that the predominant use in the building is going to be the school. And the houses, I think you indicated, the house use was going to be sort of a vacation home, a weekend home. Is this two principal uses? Or is the principal use and accessory use?
I believe I identified the variance as two principal uses in one building.
So in the I-zone, even though it exists, the house, the single-family home isn't a permitted use either, correct?
It's correct.
So there, it's not two uses, it's two use variances.
Yes.
To permit the two specific uses.
Right, and, and, and Ernie, when I, uh, when I was talking to board members, I indicated that, uh, in terms of that secondary use, you know, the, 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 the particular suitability here is because the home exists. E- even though it's a non-conforming uh use, the home has existed here, has used, and what we're doing is diminishing the intensity of that portion of the use.
And Ms. Jennings, I guess, just to keep the record clear, the, the rider under section A and B, the introduction and the appeal, um, I'm assuming Mr. Janu's testimony supplements that?
Correct.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. For the chair, a quick, a question, uh, clarification. The residence will only be used as a vacation home for the, for the owner of the home, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, but again, um, not to get into too legal, but you can't control who actually stays in the house legally. Ownership or rental, but the goal is that he's only coming here on the weekends when he's coming to visit. He lives in Brooklyn.
Well, I mean, we did hear testimony on the intensity or the less intense use of somebody coming down just for the weekends. So that, would that exclude? Would you agree that excludes renting the property out to a tenant to live there full-time?
Yeah, there would be no full-time usage of the house.
Or renting it out or making it available on Airbnb or Verbo or those types of services?
I, well, I don't want to speak for Dr. Siegel, but I, my, my feeling would be no, we're not going to do Airbnb, but um, let him say that.
Just want to get on the record.
Let him say that on the record.
We have no intention of using it for an Airbnb, Vemo, uh, any, any other full-time use of residential.
So a vacation home for the owner of the property?
The owner of the property would be staying there when he comes for the weekends, which is not every weekend at all, a couple of weekends a year, I think.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jennings, can we just clarify that? Owner's name on the application is Judith Ann Bullmash.
O- owner of the property's name is, I guess, Judith Ann Bullmash. If that's the official name, she's married to Max Bullmash, who is my father-in-law that I've been referring to, staying in the property. When he comes for weekends, he comes with his wife Judith Ann Bullmash, and they stay together on the property.
Perfect, thank you.
Through the chair. Uh, can I have clarification on the mixed use uh with the intended residential side? Uh, are there going to be any type of restrictions or over, not restrictions, will there be any overlap of usage?
No, I, I can't imagine that, uh, the father-in-law and wife would be there while the girls are in school.
So to that point then, would there be time restrictions as to when the house can be used as a residence? Whether it be Friday at sunset till su- sunset?
Well, maybe we just do it, the school operates from nine to four, and after that it could be used as a residence. Girls aren't going to be there. Or Friday through Sunday? Would that be fair, Dr. Siegel?
The, the question is if there's any, when it's, when it's used, the question is if there's any.
Mixed use?
There's no overlap use, so there's no, there's no one using it as a residence during the school calendar. When school is, is, is in session, then it's.
So, but, but that statement's very broad. So you're saying that during the school year, no one will use that property as a residence?
Talking about for the future? If, if that's. Yes, yes, no, no, no one's using it as a residence during.
And you gotta remember, it's an Orthodox school year, so, right.
But I, I need clarification that, that we won't be a residence in the school at the same time. We won't have education process and religious going on at the same time as, as the residents being occupied upstairs.
Right.
Or, or, or isn't?
No, no, the residents will not be upstairs while there's religious, wh- while there's religious education going on or, or school activities going on.
Right, while the school's in session, there'll be nobody at the house as a resident.
Need further clarification on, on in session. Are we saying nine to four? Um, yeah, nine to four, Monday through Thursday?
Correct.
So therefore, from four oh one Thursday to s- Monday at eight oh, eight fifty-nine, it can be occupied as a residence?
Yes, I would say that would be correct.
And then to that point, the residents, we haven't heard testimony as to the residents itself, how many bedrooms there are. Is, is it just be one individual coming down to stay, or is there a limitation uh, intent on the resident's side?
It's a four-bedroom house, so you could imagine if they brought one of their other kids with them, that'd be okay on a weekend?
Yeah, we haven't heard testimony, so I just want to get that side cleared up.
There are three bedrooms there. There is one that is occasionally used on weekends when my father-in-law and his wife Judith Ann Bullmash come for the weekend. They stay in the, the one master bedroom and they leave on usually Saturday night because he wants to get back to Brooklyn. Um, I don't think that they've ever stayed for Sunday. They usually come Friday before sundown and leave Saturday night. That's the facts as they are. Um, if you want to restrict, you, if you want to put a restriction on who could stay there when, that's something that I guess is, if the board is, has the rights to do that, I guess, I.
Madam Chair. I hate to do this at nine thirty at night. Ms. Jennings, did we have something to cover both uses in the notice? I didn't look at the notice. I just keep looking at the application. And we keep going back to this, the, the house use. And everything I have is a bifurcated application for a use to operate a s- small high school.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to look at the notice, but I, I remember it was a use variance. I don't remember if we asked for two D variances, what you're asking for, to operate both.
Madam Chairman, while Dr. Siegel is still there, may I ask a question? It's your father-in-law that owns the property with his wife. I don't know if it's your mother, but your father-in-law owns the property, correct?
Correct.
The nonprofit will be what, a tenant?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Through the chair. Uh, Dr. Siegel, given the nature of the students and the concerns that you're addressing with the students, um, will the students or have the students ever been able to stay at that house after hours and have they ever been allowed to stay there during the weekend? You know, with the permission of the parents, uh, so that their, their other needs are being addressed. Do they stay there other than on school hours? And will they be permitted ever to stay there on, other than those school hours?
No, and I smile when you asked it because the question has come up and the answer is always no. Nobody can be there outside of school hours. As a matter of fact, when we have weekend activities, like we just had last week, it's at a different location. Like I said, the graduation's at a restaurant in Lakewood. If there's a weekend activity, it's at a hotel somewhere. It's not on the property.
Through the chair, I have a question while you're up there regarding the school use. Um, how would you handle a, a situation if somebody got hurt? Do you have a school nurse? Do you have a school nurse?
We do not have a school nurse.
What about security for a school?
We do not have a security guard.
Thank you.
Madam Chair Lady?
Yeah.
Again, this for the planter. For the, for the planner, I'm sorry.
I, 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 I hope that would.
I'm looking at the, the, the exhibit that's on the screen right now. What is the zone in this area here for Lakewood?
So that is Lakewood and that, I believe, uh, just one moment. Did discuss that and be with me.
I thought you said it was residential. I'm not sure.
It is in the residential zone, but that zone in Lakewood permits houses of worships, uh, houses of worship and schools as well. Here with me, trying to find it. That definition for you?
I don't need the definition. I just need to know the zone designation is my question.
R forty.
Okay. If you go further, I guess, in, in this direction toward the s- the bottom of the screen, I guess that's more southerly. The I-zone go, does it go down to a bor- another border of another municipality?
And unfortunately, paired so long ago, I don't know what that looks like below that.
But could it be down in, in, either the Manchester or the?
I'm not sure it extends that far.
You're not sure?
I'm not sure. I, I can't answer that.
Thank you.
Through the chair. The planner, does this increased usage requiring a Gypsy's permit, or is the septic adequate, or is there enough space on the property to accommodate an enlargement of it with respect to the wells and the adjoining properties?
I think that'll be something that's investigated by the engineer as part of site plan, but I believe, um, my saying is this is a one-acre lot and could probably accommodate the flow of the school.
Even with the wells, could be within a hundred feet of the property or the?
That's, again, that's to be proven. I can't testify to that, but there's an expectation that it can.
That's, again, that's to be proven. I can't testify to that, but there's an expectation that it can.
To follow up on that, uh, from a septic system design standpoint, they, the site is large enough to accommodate one. It would need to be evaluated and possibly um, enlarged to accommodate dual use through the health department. That that would be my guess at the time of site plan. Um, as far as a well, a pot, a private potable well is more than sufficient to to cover this this type of capacity or demand. Um, you know, a three-bedroom home plus the twenty students is synonymous to a five or six-bedroom home from a usage standpoint.
Even if sprinklers were to be included at one time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Through the chair. I was trying to get a good segue to bring up my next, my only point at this point. Um, if this goes well for the applicant and the board um does approve this as part of deliberation and as part of the approval, can we put a a timeframe with which to um have the site plan filed? I would appreciate that.
Ms. Jennings, just preparing for everyone. Um. Ms. Fritch asked about nursing security. Um. For most of us up here that I can speak for, other than Ms. Fritch, our children of public school were traditional to have a nurse and or security in this day and age, unfortunately. Is that typical in an orthodox school? I don't know. So I'm asking the question.
I would actually have to have Dr. Siegel answer that. I think because of the size of the school? No, of the larger schools, yes.
So a- as for my last testimony, security, security guards, the larger schools, yes, there are security guards. There's Iron Rock Security that provides those securities. In the smaller schools, typically it's video camera, it's staff um, that's providing that. In terms of the nursing care, the elementary schools most definitely do have nurses or on-staff EMTs. The, as I testified last last time in the boys' highs, the boys', there was post-high school, but as we get to the smaller schools, generally speaking, there's a responsible adult on site. We have a very robust ambulance system, volunteer ambulance system, that's all ambulance uh system that is extremely responsive. Their response times, I believe, are ninety seconds or less. Whenever there's any issue that comes up, it's a phone call, it's taken care of. It's if it's anything that it does not need that emergency care, parent is called, come pick up your child and take care of it. The the nursing, it to my knowledge, has never really been a major issue.
Just wanted to ask Ms. Jennings if she had a copy of her notice?
No, not with me.
Just for the boards uh and the public's understanding, what I'm, what I'd like to do is examine the notice uh to deter to determine if the board has jurisdiction to act this evening. If not, it will have to be relisted uh for action. But I would suggest that based upon the testimony we've heard this evening, that we continue with public comment.
Yeah, um, but we did ask for a use variance, so you could certainly act on the use variance for the school. It's whether or not we can keep the two dual uses is is the issue.
Correct.
I do have a catch-all, I'm certain, and the notice I always do.
I was just gonna. I I that's why I wanted to take a look at the address. So the notice, the notice that I'm looking at requests a use variance from ordinance section two forty-four sixty-three A to permit a school where same is not permitted. Sure, can you hear me? I don't know. This my, I don't like this microphone. I can't read and talk at the same time. Section, uh, this requests a use variance from ordinance section two forty-four sixty-three A to prevent a school where same is not permitted. And two, such other relief as may be required, including any variances, exceptions, or waivers deemed necessary by the zoning board or its professionals during review of the application. So there's a catch-all provision in uh item two. Uh, so we have identified another use variance that is necessary tonight. I would, I would, I would think that this particular notice with the catch-all provision covers that. Under the provisions, I believe the board has jurisdiction to proceed with the application.
Uh, Ms. Jennings, are you going to finish tonight, you think?
We're finished. I think we're just going public portion now.
Okay, I was, if you weren't, I was going to suggest just to be safe, that you may want to renotice, but since you're going to be finished tonight.
Yes, that was our case in chief.
Are there any other questions for this witness?
Weren't you gonna have a traffic expert?
No traffic expert.
Oh, no.
Being at the. The chair, through the chair.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Jennings, one last question. Dr. Siegel may have, may have said this, uh, it's an age-out question. The students are fourteen to seventeen, and upon completion of their seventeenth year, they age out of this program. Is that correct? Or is it eighteen? Yeah, I'm just.
It it it's high school. We could say eighteen to be safe, but I think it's fourteen to seventeen. I just don't know the birthdays and the cutoffs.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the that the concept of the program doesn't allow for uh someone that's nineteen, twenty, twenty-one years of age to stay in the program.
No, it does not.
All right, thank you.
Given that the applicant has finished their testimony, I'd like to open it to public session. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board to the board's professionals or to the applicant and its professionals will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you would, please state your name, spell your last, and provide your address, please.
It Bannon, B A double N O N. I'd just like to commend.
Address.
That was twenty twenty-two, Avrorn Court.
Thank you.
I'd just like to commend Mr. and Mrs. Siegel for what they're trying to do with these young ladies. However, I seem to go along with Ms. Fritch that if they accept the lady into a program, that they not put her back out on the street. Then let they deal with, try and deal with what they got to, don't worry about the short skirts, don't worry about the purple hair, don't worry about the whatever the problem is. They're accepting these ladies into a program. They should be able to deal with it. Thank you.
The Bannon, although I agree with you, not although, I agree with you, and I do applaud Mr. Siegel in his life as well. Uh, but we do have to keep in mind, this is a society well-living. We have the problem somewhere, and at some point, the disruption, and he mentioned they were fifteen. As a parent, I'm sitting up there thinking, what of those, how do those other six influence the other nine? So at some point, I do think we have to be conscious of the fact that this is a a a situation where those, the disruptors do become detrimental to the other students, and whether it's public, private, or a homeschool situation, there's got to be some rules, there's got to be some structure.
Would anyone else like to come speak and come forward?
If you would, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board to the board's professionals or the applicant and its professionals will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. If you would, please state your name, spell your last, and provide your address, please.
Chani Joseph, C H A N I J O S C P H. My address is three Oklahoma Drive, Jackson, New Jersey. Three Oklahoma Drive, Jackson, New Jersey. Um, I just first of all, I did thank everyone for being here. I, until tonight, I didn't even know how much work went behind into such an amazing program that I attended. Um. What the? Um. Um. Yeah, I just wanted to say that the program really helped me and through many struggles I went through, and I really appreciate them. Um, I did have other things to say, but I can't remember. I'm sorry. I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody, anyone, oh, excuse me. Anyone else like to come forward?
Uh, my name is Richard Heuser.
If you, Mr. Kaiser, please, if you would, raise your right hand.
I sure will.
I have to swear, yeah. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board, to the board professionals, to the applicant or its professionals will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
If you would, please state your name, spell your last, and provide your address.
Uh, Richard Heuser, that's H E U S E R. I live at two Red Cedar Run in Jackson.
Thank you.
Uh, by what I'm listening from the board here, you're as confused as I am. Because um, I I hear what the doctor's suggesting is maybe a nice thing or whatever, but I don't know whether we're opening up a can of worms here or not. Now, this is a uh commercial-zoned area, I understand, is i- if not, I mean, and if you open up this now to a school as well as a residential use also, and what he's proposing to do, he says he's going to do now, but whatever happens in the future, I don't, I don't know what's going to happen, you know? And and even though you people have done in the past, you've made certain regulations and so forth, then there's been court cases, and then we go to New Jersey, and then we come back and we find out that that's not the way it goes, and that then it has to be changed, and then the kids have to be bused or whatever it is, then and I don't see how this board can legally say that these students cannot be bused because the state, it's a requirement of the state that all children, it if they attend a school, no matter where they're, as long as they live in a township, that they have to be bused if 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 th- they ask for it. No ma- I don't care what they're saying. Am I wrong in that?
It's not the board requiring, Ms. Jennings and the applicant said that was a condition of approval. They are not allowing busing. That was not a board condition. Let me just be clear.
Okay. But now, again, uh, we're having a dual uh uh zoning here. One's a residential upstairs and one's a school downstairs. Uh, can I do that in my house too? I mean, is is are we going to allow that everywhere? I mean, is that the kind of thing we're going to do in Jackson? I mean, uh, I just don't understand it. It doesn't make sense to me. It, uh, you know, I'm sure, like I said, he's got uh, you know, well intentions and everything else, but uh, students i- in uh, it's my understanding of the public schools, children that don't quite fit in or whatever, they have other programs for them and everything else. And someone also said that they could also have their religious instructions somewhere else. Now, once you open this, and I don't, now we, the gentleman over here has now talked about what they do in uh um, the town next door. What they do over there has nothing to do with us at all, okay? Our township is Jackson. Okay, what they do in Lakewood has nothing to do with us, okay? Because a lot goes on in Lakewood that goes on. Okay, so whether he wants to bring that up as an issue, and again, you're asking for four uh, types of different variances that you want to get, okay?
As we stated earlier, the reasons came to this point was because they had started operating and they were issued a citation. I probably just used the wrong word.
Why did they? Excuse me. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I just, I'm just trying to hear and answer your question. Um, as far as Mr. Jennings' reference to Lakewood, you're right, this is Jackson, and we have to buy by the zone, we are assuming Jackson.
Okay, okay. One other thing, uh, now, also, um. With uh, with reference to um. Um, so I lost my train of thought when you started talking all of a sudden. Um, um. I know, I know you're, it's up, it's getting late, and I know you have other things to do, but um, uh. I I again, I don't understand the double use here, you know, where someone could live upstairs, and then uh, you have a school downstairs and everything else. That that doesn't just make make sense to me.
That.
And you're also going to be giving four variances also, and that doesn't make sense to me either, uh, you know? And I I know that uh, schools are an inherent uh, u- use in the in the state and everything else, but having a a private residence upstairs and having a school downstairs doesn't seem to be inherent to me.
Sure. Uh, under municipal land use law, if the applicant makes the appropriate use variance applications, they, two principal per- two principal uses are permitted on the same property. So that there's nothing that prevents that under the laws of the state of New Jersey, under municipal land use law. Um, I'd like to make clear that the zoning board itself does not make any regulations whatsoever. The zoning board's role is to interpret the ordinances of Jackson in in i- i- in i- i- and consider the master plan and and grant use variances or other variances where appropriate. So we don't regulate, we don't zone, okay? The zoning board has no regulation power, no zoning power whatsoever. All we can do is hear applications for variances and determine if they're appropriate under the law. So that the the zo- the zoning board makes no regulations whatsoever.
Well, who's going to approve this thing anyway?
The zoning board would approve a variance if it were appropriate.
And then who approves the school and everything else?
What do you mean? I I don't understand your question. This is a private, this is a private school. It doesn't require accreditation under the laws of the state of New Jersey.
So we're going to do whatever we want.
I I don't know who we are or.
I mean, the board or whatever.
Well, the board is going to hear the application on its merits and determine if the use variances or the variances requested are appropriate when considering the ordinance of Jackson Township and considering the zone plan of Jackson Township. That's the role of the zoning board. That's all that we do.
Okay, well, it sounds like you all have a lot of questions, and I think you ought to consider more before you go wind up passing this thing and and doing whatever you're going to do. Because it doesn't seem like all of you uh seem to understand this whole thing. I sure as hell don't. Thank you very much.
I would raise it higher by my shoulder.
Thank you. Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or? You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments that you're about to present before the board, to the board professionals, to the applicant or its professionals will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. If you would please state your name, spell your last and provide your address, please.
Keith Gerthner, G E R T N E R four B as in boy. Crim Rose Lane, Jackson, New Jersey, oh eight five two seven. Um, first of all, I think it's a great thing, uh, that they're trying to do to educate um, the young ladies. Uh, as someone who's been involved with youth for my whole life, actually as a educator, as a program director, um, as someone who helps provide services. Um, I really didn't even expect to speak tonight because I thought something totally different was on the schedule. So I'm not even one hundred percent prepared, but as someone who has done all this, including, um, while I was in Memphis working for a school, uh, with, to teach kids with learning disabilities. I gotta tell you, I have so many concerns about what this school is trying to do and how they're trying to operate it. Um, right from the beginning, if you're having someone, if you're trying to have a school for kids who are at risk in any kind of way, your leadership has to have some kind of education within that scope. And I don't hear any of that from the leadership at this school. I don't know what kind of background they have, um, with regards to educating at-risk youth, um, which is what they seem to be, but there doesn't seem to be any. Um, I'm also concerned with, uh, I guess the usage of the word homeschooling. Um, maybe it's not, you guys don't mean traditional homeschooling. Traditional homeschooling is if I'm a parent, I have a child, I don't want them to go to school. My child is at my home. You're operating a school because you're taking other parents' children into your school. So there is no homeschool. It's just a school. And for the secular learning portion of your schooling, I mean, it's akin to going to Walmart now where everything is self-checkout and, you know, then doing something else, which is what this program is. They can do all of that at home and do their religious learning at their synagogue. Um, and I'm sure any synagogue would provide that opportunity. So I'm not really sure, again, the need to have this school, um, particularly without having the right leadership involved to work with kids that are at risk. Um, and I know you were talking about inherent good. You know, again, you're non-accredited. You're using a program that while it may be accredited in other schools, isn't accredited in New Jersey. So you're gonna have people graduate without an accreditation. So when they go to apply for positions, jobs, there is nothing. They, they can't say, oh, I have a high school diploma cuz it's not an accredited high school. So you lose, in my opinion, you lose your inherent goodness because you're not actually in, uh, giving them an inherent good. Cuz it's basically, you know, I can print that off my printer today. Here's a diploma and it doesn't, it means the same exact thing. And I'm very concerned about that because it's a detriment to the children. So all I'm hearing is a detriment and this isn't even to go into the fact that in no way, shape or form, in my mind, should anyone have the opportunity to live in a school, even if it's, even if you say it's in off-school hours, um, no one should ever, their school shouldn't have two uses. The only use a school should have is a school. Um, and whether or not it's applicable for law, whether it's allowed, you know, it's one of those things where just because you can do it, doesn't mean you should. So even entertaining the idea that someone can live in a house in a school, excuse me, you're trying to make it a school. Um, it concerns me. Also concerns me that you don't have, uh, any procedures I haven't heard of for, uh, nursing or healthcare there. You say you have some kind of accredited social workers. I mean, my, my biggest thing is from all the work that I've done, I'm not sure why you didn't use these opportunities to go to the schools you were in and say, you know what? We're having children that have, uh, different needs. And say, you know, Rabbi so-and-so, whoever's running your school, we need to sit down as a community and bring some other resources in. That's what we do in, in all the other schools and everything I'm involved in. Whether it was Boys and Girls Clubs, whether it was Jewish Community Centers I worked at, whether it was a school I worked at, um, in Memphis, um, or the job I'm in now, it's bringing resources and providers in, help. I'm sorry.
Please address the chair.
I, I apologize, sir. Um, so all these things taken in their totality just to me seems like there's a lot more work that they need to do before they come and say, let's build a school. I mean, again, I'm not even going to the, 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 the other aspects that may or may not have issues with, with, it's an industrial zone and what that could mean to the town or not mean to the town or any of that other stuff. I'm just strictly talking about grave concerns that I have as someone who's an educator, who's worked with youth for my entire lifetime. With having, again, and I can't stress this enough, having leadership that has no idea with how to run a school, particularly for kids that are at risk. So I, I don't know if you guys have questions for me or not. I don't know how this all works, but that's my spiel for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for raising your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments that you're about to present before the board, to the board professionals, to the applicant or its professionals will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you very much. If you would please state your name, spell your last and provide your address.
Hiya Schwartz, S C H W A R T Z, one eleven High Grove Crescent, Lakewood, New Jersey, oh eight seven oh one. So I wanna start by saying that I've been in so many schools, I've been all around the community and I've seen the tremendous need. I know we're talking about whether there is a need or whether there's not a need, but I've been in all the schools. I've been in all the schools where, um, the schools try their best to, um, add whatever resources possible they can to keep the girls there because they don't want the girls to go anywhere else. And it doesn't work because the girls just left and they weren't able to be there or the school wasn't able to stick to their standards because they were having students there who couldn't stick their standards. And then there, when we let our girls go, as we discussed, there is another place to go if we wanna stick to our standards. But we see that there's this huge gap that needs to be filled. And I know we're talking about, um, different, um, education and I am there. I have a degree in special education. I've worked in about ten different schools, getting to see, getting different experiences. I've volunteered all my nights for the past four years to work with these kids and to see what they need. And, um, since I have a degree in special education, I work to make sure that the students do get the education that they need. We had a school social worker, the school social worker this year, um, for the clinical part of it to be on top of every single student to make sure that they get the social and their emotional needs met. Um, we see there's never enough. We, um, going forward next year, uh, have, are adding even more hours to make sure that every single parent is communicated with, every single student's getting all the therapy they need. Uh, we know that we can't provide them every single, um, all the therapy that they need. So we will, we have the tools in place to recommend them to be able to get that support that they need. But, um, we really, all the people involved are educated and we are, we are confident going forward that we are gonna be able to meet the needs of our students and that there's no other place for them to go. Otherwise, we wouldn't be doing this.
Just for clarification, do you work at this school?
Yes.
Excuse me, through the chair. Ms. Schwartz, were you a product of this type of school?
No, but, um, as a student, I feel like I got, um, uh, high school experience that was, um, very specific to my needs. And I know that there's so many different people with all their needs and I see that this is the kind of school that other students need and, and I just have, I, I see it and I see it in myself and I was given the opportunity, not in this exact system, but I see that there is a need for this.
Maybe you can help us better understand the dynamic. I can't say that I understand completely what the dynamic is in the orthodox school structure. It creates a circumstance whereby the student is either rejected from that structure or no longer wants to be in that structure. And then where this school comes in and fills the need and provides a structure wherein that student can blossom and learn. Now, that's my perhaps oversimplified understanding of what's happening here. Can you elaborate on whether or not my understanding is off? And, and, and can you provide any details as to what is actually occurring that creates that need?
So I think that one very big answer is that there's just so many students, um, in the system. And because there's so many students, then the majority of the students' needs get met. But wherever you go, there's gonna be students who, their needs aren't met. And I don't think it's necessarily specifically specific to this, but it's just because there's so many people that the majority it works for, the majority of the students in the system it works for, but then there are those few who it doesn't work for.
And I don't mean to put words in your mouth, so that the structure within the community works for many, but it doesn't work for all.
Right.
And for the ones that it doesn't work for, whether it's an emotional component or a psychological component or an educational component, this type of the school is filling that need?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, Ms. Schwartz, a question as well. Uh, you, you, is Dr. Siegel your sole employer or you work at other facilities?
Um, Dr. Siegel is my employer. I also work at another place on Sundays. And I work at another school in the mornings.
So how much time do you spend at the current, uh, uh, school?
At this school?
Yes.
Twelve fifteen to four.
Say again?
Twelve fifteen to four every day.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Excuse me, anyone else coming forward with a comment? If not, I'll be closing public session. The board is now up to us. Ms. Jennings, close.
I think that we all heard a lot of testimony, so I don't wanna reiterate any of them. I do think that this school is obviously filling a need that the orthodox community is telling us that they have. And so, um, I believe we meet both the positive and negative criteria and I would respectfully request that the board grant an approval. And then remember, this is only for the use variance. We would have to come back and get a site plan in the future.
So I would just, I just wanted to remind the board, there was that last comment, "In the future," that kinda rang a little bell in my mind. Uh, during your deliberations, you should, um, deliberate on the timeframe for which a site plan app, site plan application should be made. It's, it's in your right to do that. Um, I don't know if you wanna have some discussion with that, with the applicant's attorney or not, or if you just wanna, uh, choose a, what's a, what's a good timeframe to have a site plan application submitted. Doesn't mean you're gonna hear it. We think you waited about a year to get here to this point, so, um, but at least to have a site plan application submitted if you were to vote favorably on this. I would say it's part of your deliberations and it should be part of your, it should be a condition of your approval.
Through the chair. Can I get clarification on earlier testimony? And I don't recall who said, I don't know if it was the architect or the doctor. But, and also in the package, there, there's a photograph of a classroom setting on the first floor. Is it the intent of the applicant not only use the basement moving forward, but also the first floor?
Just the basement.
Just the basement. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
This question is for Mr. Hill. Mr. Hill, do you have any recommendations to the board as to what you would think a reasonable timeframe would be for a site plan?
It's a small lot. Uh, there is gonna be some additional survey work that's required, uh, engineering. Uh, knowing that it's a nonprofit with a with a, with budget con- con- uh, considerations, um, I would suggest six months. Uh, that's more than enough, that's more than adequate. The fastest I think this could be done is forty-five days, but let's be realistic and a little sympathetic and say six months. That would be my recommendation.
Ms. Jennings, do you have a position on that?
I would have asked for a year, but I think the client said six months would be okay.
Thank you.
Okay, board, it's up to us. Questions, concerns, issues?
I'll start.
I'll start a motion for the purposes of discussion. Uh, I would move uh, to grant the use variance for the school. Deny the use variance for the, um, private residence. Or deal with one at a time, do with, um, I, I, I've looked for some protocol, but I wanna deal with still with the school first. Um, I'd move to grant the use variance for the school. Uh, but I, I, I'm just struggling in that I think we've gotta talk about the, the private residence as well in consideration. But, um, so I'm looking for some guidance from you, counselor, in terms of, uh, which is the, which is the better protocol to follow.
Certainly, it's a board's prerogative to entertain one use variance at a time if that's what the board wishes to do.
How do we separate the two uses?
I don't think, I don't think you can.
It's my point. It sounds like they are somewhat dependent on each other.
I don't know. I don't know if I would characterize them as dependent on one another. I think that I would characterize them as being two principal uses in the same building, which I think is, is probably the best way to describe it. Meaning that I, I don't, I, I mean, essentially, we'd be leaving a shell on the upstairs, you know, if we're not considering the, you know, o- otherwise, I guess that could be a school as well, technically.
Yeah, the, the, the intent would be to grant the use variance for the entire structure to be used as a school. Um, and.
And certainly, that's the.
And, and, and not for the structure to be used at all for the, uh, for the dual purpose of a residence. So if, if, if that'll get it started, then that's the motion I'll make. I'll make a motion to, uh, to grant the use variance for the entire structure to be used uh, as a school and for, um, none of the structure to be used as the, as a, for the secondary primary use as a, as a residence. That would be the motion.
Conditions?
Yeah, uh, yes. Uh, some of the conditions, I believe, one of which has been already accepted by the applicant and that is on the busing, uh, that there would be no busing, the, um, excuse me? The, well, the representation is that the maximum students would be twenty. Uh, that would be one of the conditions. And, um, yeah, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop it there for the purpose of, of the motion and see if there's a second and we can go to discussion. Excuse me? For the purpose of this, of the motion that I've made, I'm gonna stop it there. And, and, and see if we get a second for discussion, but just.
Just to clarify, are we going to, did you wanna address the recommendation by Mr. Hill? For the site plan?
Before we get to that, can we ask the applicant if it's acceptable to amend their application to make it just a school for the entire building?
So I know that the applicant's representative, uh, I don't believe the father-in-law is gonna go for it. It's his house that he anticipated being able to use on the weekends, so it really isn't gonna work for us.
I'll, I'll withdraw the motion, but I'm not ready at this point to make another one. I've gotta think. Someone else wants to move forward to make a motion. They can. I've gotta rethink.
Are we still in the discussion phase? So
So there's there's no motion on the floor? I think we're we're trying to procedurally have a motion to discuss whether there's a second or not. So does, is there anyone who wants to make a motion or are there comments that you'd like to make?
I'd like to make comments. I thought the motion was withdrawn.
The motion is withdrawn.
Oh, okay. So Matt.
For purposes of discussion, anyway, I'll make a motion that the application be denied. I can give you reasons. My reasons are that we have two uses. We have a residential use and a school use. I disagree with the opinions of the applicant's planner in part. And that is, he said, the benefit is that we are reducing a uh non-conforming use and the and the property is in the industrial zone. The property is utilized as a, as a residence, so it it does benefit from the statutory non-conforming use de- definition. But my understanding of non-conforming uses and the and the reasons that they're permitted is not to change the use or intensify the use, but to get rid of the use. Um, and I don't think we're we're doing that by allowing the same building, which is a non-conforming use, to be changed to two uses. To me, that's, it's like an intensification of uh that structural use. Um, so as far as that's concerned, I think there's some serious problems here with the 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 use itself as being a residence in an industrial zone. We have to start with the understanding it's a non-conforming use. My other concern here, I asked the question of the planner, and I hoped he would have the answer to it, because I'm not sure, I I I don't. But I asked what the zone boundaries are here for the adjoining municipalities, and does this industrial zone going south attach to another municipal boundary? And what is that zoning, what's the zoning permitted on on that boundary line, if there is one? I ask that because the governing body, when they adopt these ordinances and and discuss the the uses to be imposed, um, they they are required to look at the municipality, the adjoining municipality, what the impact that you're joining municipality would be also. So it'd be interesting to know if it went south, whether it's Manchester, I don't know if Manchester, I think Manchester, buts. It what? Tom's River, whether it's industrially zoned, which to me would make sense to have this industrial zone, this area zoned industrially, since if if it attaches to adjoining municipality with an industrial zone. But the the planner did not know that. I I I think it's essential to have that information in my mind in any event. Because when you're asked for a a a variance for the use, which is being asked here, that's contrary to the zone plan. And in probability, it's probably contrary to the master plan. Now, I recognize that governing bodies can ad- can adopt ordinances that are inconsistent with the master plan, and as a procedure, they must follow to do that. But generally, it has to be consistent with the master plan. I've heard, I've heard the applicant's planner talk about the positive criteria, and you mentioned A, B, and I think C. But I've always said, and I still say, that those purposes are created for the purposes of governing bodies creating these ordinances. It gives guidance to the zoning board in making a determination as to whether or not the special reasons exist. Now, we get to an inherently beneficial use. Someone here said, I think it was Mr. Book mentioned, and and correctly, I I'm sure, that not all uses are, have the same impact as an inherently beneficial use. And maybe even Ms. Jennings mentioned, or maybe it was our planner, I don't remember, who said, for example, you may not want to have four schools on the same corner uh of an intersection. And having too many of the same use on the same corner reduce the impact and the benefit of having inherently beneficial use. Inherently beneficial use pres- presumes that it's a, it's a benefit to the general welfare. And that's a presumption. There are a lot of cases that that talk about the the need has to be established, they 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 obviously, if they're if they're mentioned by the Supreme Court or the appellate division, um, that a need has been shown. It it must mean that was part of the record. Well, I really haven't really heard that much about it on the record here. Some exams, examples of that would be CECA, which was mentioned by the planner. The CECA case involved a head trauma, if I recall, it was a head trauma type case. And the Supreme Court said, look, this application is for the township of Wall. The nearest head trauma location was in New York, which means it established a need for it in Wall, at least in the regional area. I haven't heard that kind of testimony here. Uh, there's another case similar, I forget, I think it's Carrie Bari, it comes out of Hun- Huntington County, but it's in the appellate, the appellate division case. It was for a Muslim temple. And the court noted that there is a need for this that has to be established. It was part of the record. And that need is that in Huntington County, there is no other Muslim temple. This would be the only one. Not hearing that here. I'm not, I wa- I didn't get satisfaction in in my mind relative to my point. Could could these young ladies go to a public high school where they would get the benefit of the services that are provided and get private religious inspection uh instruction elsewhere? I have to keep in mind that I, as a member of the board, would be granting a variance for this use. But this use could change next year. It could be a Christian school that gets created. It could be a Muslim school that gets created. It's going to be a school. It doesn't necessarily follow that it can only be for a specific religion. Obviously, we can't do that. So I have to look at the possibilities of what this can evolve into. And I'm I'm not satisfied that the applicant has met that burden. The school bus issue. Maybe the issue of traffic was going to come up more in in the site plan issue, but I think the traffic is is essential. Any of us that have driven down Cross Street, which the the set, the street that um Milhurst, is it? That intersects, you can go down that street. And I know there are plans in the future for that street. But I don't see that there there are, I know, I don't see that as having been addressed at Wall. And I I think we have to address it. Yes, we're limiting it to uh twenty students, but I don't know how we enforce that. And it could be twenty-seven students. What if it's thirty? Who's going to be there to check that? I I, we can't do that. The school bus issue, I I my kids always walk to school, so I I never had that that experience. I I know, I think Ms. Fritch indicates, or someone indicated, Ms. Fritch's kids have to, she has to pay for it. But I know friends that they have to pay to have the kids transported to a school, because I thought it was because they are beyond a certain distance. If they're within a certain distance, I thought maybe they would provide it the bus service. My only concern here is that if this evolves to another type of school, if it goes to a parochial school, if it becomes a Christian school, for example, if it becomes a Muslim school, any other religious uh school, some religions, you know, courts have trouble at times defining what what is a school? What is a religion? They have those kinds of problems. So if this evolves into something else, and those school buses are going to be utilized, what are we doing here? What are we creating? You know, there's nothing, we're talking about safety, they're talking about no guards, and talking about uh this closed-circuit TVs, I guess, that that type of of situation. We're not talking about nurses on site. Kid come, uh, one of the these young ladies comes in and has uh I don't know, COVID. Now, what are, now what do they do? You know, how how are they going to address that? One of them falls and and gets a severe laceration. What is, how are they going to deal with that? None of that testimony has been presented. The gentleman that came up before, that the last one, last gentleman, last gentleman testified, talked about uh his experiences. And as far as I'm concerned, he addressed all of my concerns here. Every one of those concerns was legitimate. So now I'm talking about the school. Let me get to the 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 residents. We're talking about two separate uses. The first use being the school, the second use being the residence. The residence is a non-conforming uh use. It's allowed to continue. But the the whole idea is we should not expand it. We should try to to have it somehow just go away with time. And by granting this type of use with the 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 residential use and the school, that creates a a different scenario. That means we're intensifying this this use, not it's a non-conforming use. Supposed to try to let it, let it disappear. We're we're intensifying it. Mr. Book brought up the the, a potential solution for that, just make the whole building a school. Now we're dealing with just one use and not two. I haven't heard any testimony that talked about the positive criteria for the for the uh residential use, the particular suitability. Well, a particular suitability is it's an industrial zone, but it's a a residential use, it's been there for a while. It continues to be a residential use, okay? If it's going to continue to be a residential use, we'll allow it to stay as residential use. We have no choice over that. But as far as it being particularly suitable for a summer residence or a a part-time residence, you know, some of the questions came out whether it could be a Uber involved here, you know, could it, could it be uh some other type of use? It it's going to be a summer vacation. Does that mean we're 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 approving a summer vacation here? Or can we say it can only be occupied by the current owner? Well, now, as it turns out, that the owner is the is the owner of all the property, the applicant here for the school is going to be a tenant. We don't know how long it's going to be, it may not last as long, we don't know that. So I have, I have a lot of difficulty with with the burden of proof here, whether or not the applicant has met its burden. Relative to the the negative criteria, what my point here is that they're asking for a a a use variance by definition alone. That's inconsistent with the zone plan. So because it's inconsistent with the plum, the zone, the zone plan, show me why you're entitled to to the variance. I haven't heard in testimony in that regard at all. Relative to the master plan, I explained that before. I'm concerned about the the industrial zone, where it abuts uh other municipalities, how is it zoned? I think that 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 the planner should have been prepared to give you that information, should have been prepared to give me that information, because I would have asked that. Using the CECA analysis, whether, you know, we identify the benefit. I it, I think the benefit is questionable here because of the need that's been established. I indicated that the the these young ladies may need some special needs, but it's available elsewhere. You could get it from public use. The answer is, well, the families prefer them because of the Orthodox religion, prefer them to do it this way. That's fine, and I understand that. But we're talking, we're not talking about the parents, we're talking about the children here. You know, these young ladies that we're talking about. What are we doing for their protection, for their benefit? And the situation is 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 such that um the, I just, I, the the need has not been presented sufficiently to satisfy my concerns, either for the school itself or the 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 uh residence. As far as conditions to be imposed under the CECA test, as I indicated, I thought maybe, I don't know if that would change my mind, but the the suggestion made by Mr. Book that the entire thing just be a one-use variance changes the residence into a school, and we can discuss that. That would have been a a a reasonable condition, but it's not acceptable to the applicant. So, okay, so we're dealing with two separate uses. So there are no conditions. I I weigh the the benefits versus the detriment. The detriment goes to the zone plan, detriment goes to the proposed use that is here, inconsistent. You can have other uses. I recognize that it's a small lot, it's one acre. But you could have, you know, CPA can have an or, an office there. I think that was fits within the definitions as permitted by the planner when he testified. But other smaller uses, sure, that that could be. So as far as the 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 benefits that are being conferred and the detriments on the zone plan, the master plan, um, I think the the detriments outweigh the the benefits. The benefits really have not been established. And the conditions, as I've indicated, we can't establish a condition. In my mind, there's no condition that can can uh work to mitigate all of the the detriments. And that would be my position and reasoning for at least making the motion to deny the application.
Madam Chairman, may I place a couple of observations on the record? Um, as to the, as to the school, um, I was a little bit more impressed, I think, on the articulated need for the school. Granted, when you read the application, the application writer, um, it, and I've looked at it again and again, it it doesn't provide the kind of detail to establish the need that uh that Dr. Siegel and and the others testify to. Um, I accept that there is a a particular dynamic um in the Orthodox community, as expressed in Dr. Siegel's testimony and in this, I think it's Ms. Schwartz's testimony, and also in the planner uh that provides a great uh motivation to to help, to help these, and and I don't mean this in a derogatory sense, the marginalized young ladies uh that aren't uh blossoming in the in in the traditional Orthodox educational system and who then need some additional help. Um, I I thought the the attempt uh to structure a school to help them uh with the uh, and Ms. Schwartz talked about the type of work that she does to help them. And I get that it's, the the intent is is not to put them into a public school system, but to keep them within the culture of the Orthodox community and continue to foster the Jewish faith and tradition. And and so I I ex, I I accepted that need, even though I would have liked to have seen that more laid out in the in the application writer. I'm I'm gonna, I I accept Dr. Siegel's testimony as I heard it. Um, now enforcing that is is an issue. And so you take a lot of that on faith. And and yeah, the proofs are a little bit lacking, but I was leading in that direction as to the school. But as soon as you bring in the residents, I've got problems. Because then I think it 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 detracts from the impact and the benefit that you're trying to bestow upon these girls by having uh having the school. I don't like the idea uh that you cannot control and you cannot enforce who will be in that house, when they'll be in that house, what the hours of overlap might be, what the implication may be to the girls. So that I have a major issue with on top of the, uh, and I think that ends up supporting the 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 detriment i- is is too severe. So you do have, on one hand, for the school, I think you do have a a public benefit, a a reasonable inherently beneficial use. But when you add in that that residential use for me, now the the detriment's too high, the negatives are too high. And so there's, uh, I'm not inclined to um uh to grant the request as the applicant is is seeking it. But if it was just, if it was just the school, it would be a different argument for me.
By the way, did we ever get a second on the motion? Oh.
No. Yeah, um, I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion and the second on the table, and just to be clear, motion is to deny the application.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Book?
Yes, to deny.
Ms. French?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Harlan?
Yes.
Mr. Costantino?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. Ms. Jennings.
What are we gonna do with the second application?
So I was just, you're going to say that, um, obviously, this later, we don't normally start in the one at, after ten thirty. Um, we're gonna have a little progress before we try to reschedule.
We're, we're out of dates.
Knowing we have no- nothing, um, adopted for any dates beyond July nineteenth. Uh, we can carry to July nineteenth and. Um, regroup from there and carry it to a date that gets, um, recognized by the board.
Well, that application started already, and that's way out of time to be acted on.
Well, here's the issue. I have no meeting dates. I have the twenty-first and I have the nineteenth of July. That's all I have. Because our schedule for thereafter has not yet been adopted. And you, we have six applications on the twenty-first. Three of. Three of which are large.
I'm already on the twenty-first for.
You are, you are on the twenty-first. But I can guarantee we get to it on the twenty-first. I, I mean, I have six applications that night.
Are we gonna try to get any special meetings? I mean, I don't know how all these applications are gonna get done.
Ms. Jennings, I have a thought. A reorganization meeting is July nineteenth. My thought would be to list it for the nineteenth and then relist it immediately thereafter for August second. But I can't list it for August second.
I am on vacation. That's not gonna work. Own a Disney World.
We're, we're, we're gonna get there. What about the sixteenth?
Yes, I'm here on, I'm available on the sixteenth, but now I don't know if anybody, anybody else is. August sixteenth. Christine, August sixteenth? Yeah, that works for our team.
All right, so what we'll do is we'll relist to July nineteenth, and I'll make a note, uh, that this will be relisted for the six, August sixteenth.
I don't have to, do I have to physically come here in July nineteen?
No.
Okay.
No, but I'll, I'll, I'll make sure that we, first of all. This application, let me, let me go through my notice here. Um, application number three, uh, Kalal DeBrookwood, four, block six, zero, zero, two, lot two and three. This application is going to be carried to the July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. No additional notice will be required. Um, again, that's our reorganization meeting, so this, this will be relisted at that time, and the target date is August sixteenth. Two thousand twenty-three, I will renotice, uh, re-announce that at the July nineteenth meeting. And indicate that no further notice will be required.
Okay, thank you.
Assuming the applicant waives time.
Uh, what number are we gonna be on August sixteenth?
One after the bulk, I, I mean, I would, two, three, four, depending on how many bulks we have.
So what will be the first commercial?
Number one. I understand that.
Right, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? Aye.